Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 18 meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. Before we begin, I just want to make a brief note. Folks who are in attendance, it is a full house tonight. And so there are folks who are not able to come into the chambers due to fire marshal regulations. I've been assured that they are able to hear us, indeed, as is everyone who has access to the Internet. But the folks downstairs do have a direct connection. I'll also note that close council observers will observe that we have additional officers in attendance today. That is not related to the persons who are in chambers now. Over the course of the weekend, of course, there was a threat at a house of worship which necessitated its temporary closure. And we here at the council, that is to say, we as individuals have received communications that are unmistakably assassination adjacent, and as a consequence, there are officers here in attendance today. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Would our clerk please call the role of council?
Councilmember Dish, absent. Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Song?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Radina?
Here.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Iyer?
Here.
Councilmember Ackman?
Here.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here.
Councilmember Cornell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda, moved by Councilmember Iyer, seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion of the agenda. All in favor? Opposed? The agenda is approved. We have communications today from our city administrator.
Just to mention that we're planning to hold a community meeting sometime around the middle of January with regards to the Sports Illustrated Hotel project.
Excellent. Thank you. We now have an introduction from the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority, Mr. Carpenter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of councils.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carpenter. One thing I neglected to indicate is that if folks do have signs in the audience, please keep them below shoulder level. Keeping signs, holding signs above shoulder level blocks people behind you. And so that's something that we ask for people who are not in the back row. People in the back row, of course, can hold their signs above shoulder level. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. My apologies.
No trouble. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of councils. A pleasure to be back with you this evening to provide some quick updates on the state of the public transit system in the Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti area. When I first dropped by in October, and thank you very much for that invitation, the ride had just begun, its discussions about zero emissions buses. I'm happy to say we are continuing those discussions. We had robust conversations with our board in October and November. We will have continued that conversation this Thursday night at our board meeting at the downtown Ann Arbor Library, 6:30. We welcome anyone to attend, make comment. They can also do so virtually. We expect more discussion, as I say, this Thursday, but no decision until January, excuse me. So all comments are welcome, as I said. We also have a robust website where people can let us know their thoughts on the proposals and the different technologies being considered. Our hope is, with board approval starting in January through March, we'll be able to submit a grant to the Federal Transit Administration, probably in late March, early April, and hoping to hear positive news from the FTA in October of 2024. If that is forthcoming, then we're on our way, and we can begin holding up that part of the A20 plan for eliminating emissions from that part of the transportation system. So we're very excited about that. It's pretty much dumb. It's pretty much been the only thing we've talked about with our board since the last time I was here. A couple of other quick announcements or updates for you. As we updated the Blake Transit Center about 10 years ago here in Ann Arbor, we are moving forward to do the same with the Ypsilanti Transit Center next door, beginning what will probably be a two-year environmental and conceptual planning process, again, hoping to then win competitive grants to build a larger and more exciting bus terminal for the city of Ypsilanti. We continue to work with the Ann Arbor Housing Commission on the Blake Transit, excuse me, the 350 Fifth Street, the old Y lot. We continue to work cooperatively with them as a partner on their proposal for the reuse of that site. We're very excited. We're also continuing to work forward to deliver the millage services that were approved by the voters here in Ann Arbor, but also Ypsilanti and Ypsilanti Township in August of last year. All is going very well in that we've had great public input from that process, and I want to thank everyone who's come out to our meetings for that. And then my last comment, I want to thank and welcome, I should say, a former member of this body to our board, former council member Julie Grand. I believe you guys confirmed her appointment at your last meeting. We're looking forward to meeting her in person for the first time this Thursday. So in closing, again, we welcome anyone and everyone to our board meetings. They are in person and virtual, 6:30 PM this Thursday, downtown Ann Arbor Library, top floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. We now come to public comment reserve time. In order to speak at public comment reserve time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contact under a city clerk. Speakers in all cases will have three minutes in which to speak. And so whether you are speaking here at the podium or whether you are on the telephone, please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk will notify you on the phone when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is expired. The time clock here will notify you of same. In each case, when your time is expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. To refresh folks' recollection, we have reserved 45 minutes of public comment time here at the beginning of the meeting. We will run through either that 45 minutes or the first 15, the first 15 speakers. If the first 15 speakers take less than 45 minutes, we will go on until we reach the 45-minute mark. Once that last speaker has performed, provided their public comment, we will at that time proceed with the balance of the business meeting. After the balance of the meeting has concluded, after the official business of the council is done, that is to say, the votes and the work and the closed sessions to review attorney, attorney communication and so forth, at that point, we will resume public comment here in chambers in full. For those in order, again, if you are still here or whether you are online, the... I think that is all. So our first speaker today is Adam Goodman.
Adam Goodman is on Zoom. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Adam Goodman. I'm speaking to you from the fifth ward tonight. I want to first touch on the proposed rezoning along Plymouth Road to TC1. I'm very excited to see this on the agenda tonight. I live, as I said, in the fifth ward, kind of near the West Stadium corridor, which was rezoned to TC1, I believe it was late last year. So the first thing to say about that is that the sky has not fallen. If anything, this rezoning seems like it might have actually kind of, at least in the short term, slowed down progress of development along the corridor, which is not ideal, but I would say it's okay. Because TC1, for me, is as much about what it prohibits as what it enables. And what it prohibits is this, you know, that it will break us out of this decades-long cycle of car-dependent development and stop enabling developments that further entrench this pattern. That's really the first step we need to take here. In fact, I know that some of the communities along Plymouth had concerns about a car-oriented credit union project there. Unfortunately, this TC1 rezoning didn't come soon enough to save that site for a higher and better use. So anyway, you know, I, my only complaint about this is that it's taken longer than it should have, but I'm really happy to see it tonight, and I hope you all vote to approve it without delay. Also on the agenda tonight is the construction contract for the East Medical Center Bridge rehabilitation and widening. You knew I was going to talk about this, right? City Council recently adopted a resolution calling for an end to multi-lane roads. Yet here we are, widening a road at great expense. This project is a public policy disaster from start to finish and goes way against all of our city's climate and safety commitments. It was especially bad under a previous council when, when a majority voted to approve widening the bridge by 11 feet for cars and not one inch for anybody else. Now, thanks to action of this council, we now have a plan that's not quite as egregiously bad. It creates some new space for both types of users, for all types of users. But widening the bridge for cars still does run absolutely counter to the A20 and Vision Zero commitments the city has made. Now, at the end of the day, I'm not going to ask you to vote this down tonight because I realize it would cost the city even more money to redo these plans again, but please, please don't ever let a situation like this happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Griswold.
Good evening. I want to point out, as a former council member, that we have people downstairs, as you know, and we also have public hearings tonight, and those people will not have access to the public hearings. The topic I'm going to talk about is the East Medical Center Drive. This is a critical route to the emergency room. I am glad that it is moving forward and will have the pedestrian and cycling amenities that are needed. We're not always as comprehensive as we should be. We have very complex problems in this community, and it's only human nature to simplify the problem and then solve that simple problem, and you don't solve the complex problem to begin with. And so with the East Medical Center Drive, at the north end is the intersection. It's a very large intersection with Fuller, and it has had inadequate lighting for many years. I put tickets in and nothing has been done. Now, we know, based on the Department of Transportation's recent report, the safety benefits of lighting. It can reduce crashes up to 42% for nighttime injury, pedestrian crashes at intersections. That's 42%. How many percent do we save and do we improve safety when we paint gray, concrete gray at intersections? I don't know. I don't think anyone knows. But we do know that improving lighting improves and reduces crashes by 42%. Sorry, I'm a little upset, but I have lived through too many pedestrian fatalities in this community while we have not addressed lighting. The other issue that I, is the public right-of-way. I spoke about the opportunity for corruption by setting the curb rather than the legal property line at the public right-of-way for determining the setback. We have become very sloppy in this community regarding our public right-of-way. We put outhouses on the public right-of-way. They do not belong there. It is important that we realize that private operations, such as the construction at Glenn, the hotel where we have three lanes of traffic closed off due to construction. Construction belongs on private property, other than for temporary special occasions, and public amenities belong on public property. You'll see that in CA 10 tonight. We've asked for an easement for a water main. We could do the same thing for bus shelters and other public amenities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brandon Dimchov.
Brandon Dimchov on Zoom. You can go ahead.
Hi, council. This is Brandon Dimchov, calling in from West Larry Town, Ward 4. I'm calling to briefly speak in favor of C1 and C3 on your agenda tonight. I will keep my comments on both of these briefs, since I hope to speak at the public hearings for both of these if they pass tonight. I grew up on the northeast side of town, living for several years within walking distance of Plymouth Wall. It's a great area, and I'd love to see more housing built there for people to enjoy this area where I grew up. So please pass C1 so, so we can get started on upzoning that corridor and allowing us to see more neighbors there. As I mentioned, I also like to see C3 pass on to the second meeting tonight. For some reason, we currently prohibit installing solar panels in a lot of places where other structures are allowed. This ordinance would fix that. Again, I'll speak more at the public hearing if it passes, but, you know, please pass C3 so we can add more infill solar and help achieve our A20 goals. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Ivanich.
Eric Ivanich on Zoom. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm calling to voice my support for item C1, rezoning of 53 parcels along Plymouth Road to TC1. As measured this last January, homelessness hit a record high with 650,000 of our fellow Americans living in shelters or outside in tents or in cars, and this was an increase of 12% over the year before. People are suffering, and this is clearly a moral issue. And those of us secure in our own housing may not desist from meaningfully participating in helping to address this issue. This is a problem that we'll have to address as a nation, not only with short-term measures, but setting this up for the longer term as well. And expanding our TC1 zoning helps those of us in Ann Arbor to do our part in this longer term. TC1 zoning will help us add more housing along our transit corridors. Yes, this is aspirational and will take time to bring this housing to reality. And while we expect most of this housing to be market rate through a well-studied process called migration chains, many of those moving into this new housing will be vacating nearby less expensive housing, creating opportunities for still others who will in turn vacate their previous housing and so on. In a 2019 paper by Evan Mast of the Upjohn Institute, he describes how he literally followed 52,000 residents of brand-new multifamily buildings, tracing those residents back to their previous addresses, finding out who currently lived at those addresses, tracing them back to their previous addresses, and so on and so forth. To quote from the paper, "This sequence quickly adds lower-income neighborhoods, suggesting that strong migratory connections link the low-income market to new construction." Additionally, the new housing we expect to be built in TC1 will allow residents to have lower carbon footprint, and it will also help people accomplish many of their daily tasks on foot and on bicycle. So we achieved multiple wins by passing item C1. I'd like to thank city staff and city council for taking the housing issue seriously and working towards meaningful change. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Stroup.
Mike Stroup, if you're on Zoom, press star nine to raise your hand. Hi, is this Mike Stroup?
Hi, good evening. This is Mike Stroup of the Barnum Law Firm, calling on behalf of one of our clients, the Alterim Institute. Alterim owns two properties that are subject to tonight's TC1 rezoning ordinance. These properties are listed as properties number 50 and 54 on the list, although I'm told that there was a very late change to the list earlier today where property 54 may have already been removed from the list. But our request tonight is that both properties are removed from this list of properties subject to the rezoning. Our reasoning for that is efficient notice. Alterim was not given notice of the Planning Commission's November 1st meeting, where they recommended that these properties would be rezoned. They were not given an opportunity to present public comment in opposition of this. And in fact, these, this rezoning goes against their plans for the property. So in short, we request that both properties, if they haven't been already, be removed from this list. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Low.
Alex Low on Zoom. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is Alex Low, calling in from Ward 3. As Ann Arborites, we are privileged to have a community drawn from all over the world. One of the biggest things that drew me, as an immigrant, to Ann Arbor is that the people here, on the whole, try to live the same humanist values that I try to live in my everyday life. As part of this, it is a fundamental belief of mine, and I hope of everyone in Ann Arbor, that each and every person deserves the best shot possible at a good life. There are many ways to express these beliefs, and sometimes when we're trying to do so, we make mistakes or faults. But it's all part of being human. What has become clear to me in the time watching our city council is that each of our members on council tonight also strives towards this ideal, and I admire that. To live these values, Ann Arbor has to accept some difficult facts around, about the world and choose how to act upon them. One of these facts is that more and more people are going to want to join our community. Some will be students coming to study at U of M. Others will be people like myself who choose to move here because of the welcoming community. Still, others will be looking to join our community for job opportunities or as refugees. And I hope that Ann Arbor welcomes each and every one. City council members have many ways in which they're working towards these goals. One such way, though it may not be immediately obvious, is by, by the passing of C1, the rezoning along Plymouth Road. If we want to welcome refugees in our community, and if we want to stop people who would like to remain here from being forced out of the city, we need space for everyone to live. C1 is a small step in that direction, and I hope to see more, to see more of it. Because while it's a small step, it's not, it's not enough. I want to see more TC1 zonings on further areas of Plymouth. I do not believe that reducing this rezoning is a good idea. I want to see, I want to see the commercial strip, packet, and plant rezoned as TC1. I want to, to see everywhere that in the city be improved so that we can make.
30 seconds.
Better than it already is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Lawrence.
I want to talk about words, about what they mean, and about how they're making some of us scared. But first, my positionality. I stand in my hometown on the ancestral and contemporary lands of the Anishinaabe. I am a white Jew by choice with family in Israel, family here who had a knife pulled on them for supporting hostages, and a young family member who got a text after October 7th that a friend was gang raped and killed by terrorists in her office. I have protested and rallied in Lansing, Ann Arbor, Detroit, Texas, and DC in support of Black Lives, Latino and Muslim immigrant rights, abortion rights, and queer and trans rights every time I marched with Jews. For the past few months, I find myself in a surreal nightmare as I watch allies disappear in an international gaslighting fueled by weaponized vocabulary. Progressives who claim to respect indigeneity ignore historical and archaeological evidence of Jewish history in Israel, yelling "colonizer" as if to make Jews an effigy they can punish for their own guilt of living on stolen land. They repeat an age-old call for Jews to once again be kicked off their land. They refer to all Jews as white, erasing Black, Brown, and Middle Eastern Jews, as well as all those times when even the white of us were not white enough to be allowed to live. Where is the intersectionality now? The silence is just as loud, making it clear that Israeli women do not count. My heart sunk last week at the Human Rights Commission when someone said, "We don't even know what happened on October 7th." Can you imagine? This is the gaslighting. And it is happening with a day of violence that was filmed and livestreamed by the terrorists themselves. Other words I've had shouted in my face are "the right to resist," a euphemism in this context, a rallying cry for terrorism. Resistance implies that the bodies of women found with their pants down, underwear bloody, bullet wounds in their genitals and breasts deserved it. It implies that the young concert go- It implies that the young concertgoers deserved to be gunned down. It implies that toddlers deserved to be taken hostage, and babies deserved to be burned alive. But also, resistance implies that there's an authority to resist against and ignores that Hamas and not Israel has controlled Gaza since 2007. Even the word ceasefire, which we all want, conveniently forgets that there was a ceasefire in effect the morning of October 7th, when Hamas broke it. Words matter. So can we direct our words inward? Can we talk about how we can support locals with family in Israel and Gaza? Can we re-engage our anti-racist book clubs to learn about Israel and Palestine? Can we address local Islamophobia and antisemitism? Can we come together and take care of our own displaced and houseless persons? Mayor and council members, I pray for peace in Gaza and Israel, and I pray that we here use our future words to rebuild peace here.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kamal Agur.
My name is Kamal Agur, living in Ann Arbor for many, many years, and I've been here for a few times. And I'm here for the cause of Gaza and Palestine and what has been going on. Okay. Actually, I have a little video to play for you, and this is like a wake-up call, not only for Arabs or Muslims, for Americans, called "The Zionist State of Israel." When it comes to their survival, they will destroy the whole world, even Americans. This is a video talking about when
On June 8, 1964, Israel deliberately attacked an American intelligence ship, the USS Liberty. At about 2:00 PM that day, two Israeli Mirage 3s attacked the Liberty with cannon and rockets, and just a few minutes later, two mistiers dropped napalm bombs due to which ship caught fire. And then at 2:35 PM, Israeli torpedo motorboats fired five torpedoes, out of which one struck. This attack killed 34 crew members and wounded 171 others. Israel apologized, saying it mistakenly thought that the USS Liberty was an Egyptian ship, but survivors rejected the Israeli statement and claimed that the attack was on purpose, and they were right, because Israelis first identified the Liberty as a US ship at about 5:15 AM that morning. Seven other reconnaissance flights also confirmed the identity of Liberty. During attack, the ship attempted to contact the 6th fleet, but Israelis were jamming their distress frequencies. According to victims, a huge American flag was waving at the top of the ship, so there was no chance of any mistake.
So if the Israelis willing to kill Americans, the biggest and number-one supporter for them, do you expect them to be going to save lives in Gaza and Palestine? There is no way. 2003, the young American girl, Rachel Corey, she was in Palestine. She is a human rights activist. She's trying to stop the Israeli bulldozer, and I'm sure you know all about this. I'm not the only one who knows. You live, you watch the news, and you read and everything. So it's either you know, and you blame them, or you don't know, and that's why I'm here to educate you. So Rachel was crushed by the Israeli bulldozer, because she was trying to stop the bulldozer of destroying the olive oil land for the Palestinians. You knew she's an American. Just like this video, they said they didn't know it was an American ship. They also say, oh, the driver did not see her. She was like 30 yards away from the driver, and she had the flag. Thank you. Next one.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Asma Azimi.
If Speaker Asma Azimi is on the phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Phone number ending in 598. If you're on the phone, please raise your hand. Press star nine. Mayor, I don't see this caller on Zoom.
Our next speaker is Fadwa Ashour.
Caller with the phone number ending in 074. Press star six, unmute your phone. Go ahead. Phone number ending in 074, unmute your phone. Fadwa Ashour, if you press star six, you can unmute your phone.
Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Okay, perfect. Hello all, and thank you for allowing me to call, and I am a resident of War II, and I just want to first thank Councilwoman Lynn for sponsoring and considering a ceasefire resolution. And I really want to urge that the resolution our community has put together on December 4th be put forth on the agenda. It is the one all of our communities, our Jewish allies, our Muslim, Arab, LGBT community, all of them worked hard on this resolution, and I urge you all to put this forward. Mayor Taylor, I don't know if you remember me, but we had several discussions about Palestine in 2021 when a city in Palestine was forcing the eviction of Palestine, and I shared my story about being Palestinian, and you told me you heard me. And so I'm asking you, Councilwoman Lynn and Mayor Taylor, to once again hear me and hear our people, where we stand, for our Palestinians, for our community members who time and time again have not felt heard in this community. I urge you to consider where we stand in this community. This council has stood by its Black community members, its Arab, its Muslim community members, and I ask every single one of you, including the mayor, to stand with us once again. Please stand with your people who you represent. We matter, our voices matter. Now, we have different individuals who want to promote this idea of hate, but we stand against it. We, the Palestinians, stand against it, and I urge you to once again stand with the people who are being slaughtered. I ask you to show me that the system is for us, the people. I ask you and I urge you to show us that the people will be heard and that we do not have closed-door meetings without our people, without our voices first and foremost. Show me that our city stands with me and every single person who has urged you. And again, I want to thank you for listening to my voice, and yet again, I would like to ask that we show our history stands against hate, hate against Jews, hate against Palestinians, hate against Muslims, hate against every single ethnicity and race, and to not listen to the hateful individuals
30 seconds.
...having these closed-door meetings. Thank you, and I have said all I wanted.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Malak El Shafai.
Caller with the phone number ending in 804. If you are on Zoom, Malak El Shafai. Press star nine to raise your hand. Phone number 804. Mayor, I do not see this caller on Zoom.
Our next speaker is Tasneem Maradi.
Hi, my name is Tasneem. I had wanted to start out by thanking councilmembers Ayesha Gazi Edwin, Lynn Song, and Erica Briggs for cosponsoring a ceasefire resolution, and the only other council member who got back to me this last week and pledged their support to a resolution today. But since it was rescinded, I'm not really sure how I feel. I've heard sentiments that calling for a ceasefire won't make a significant impact on geopolitics, but it is an essential first step as a gesture of transnational solidarity and as a way of pressuring our elected officials to enact change through legislation. I'd like to think that we can all agree that over 19,000 children is enough. 90 journalists is enough. 30 members of my family alone have been killed over the past two months. Enough is enough. The proposed resolution, however flawed, had also addressed the rise of Islamophobia, antisemitism, and anti-Arab bigotry here at home in Ann Arbor. I want to speak to that. I'm a Palestinian-Syrian-American student at the University of Michigan, and fellow Palestinians, peace activists, and allies at U of M have been routinely harassed at protests and online. When a board member to the School of Information called peaceful protesters rapists and murderers, instead of holding her accountable, U of M leadership called for restorative actions. Students have been doxxed without protection from the school, and peaceful protests have been met with overpolicing and violent arrests. I'm also a student at U of M School of Education, and as a student teacher in the district and a fellow human being, I'm concerned with the well-being of young people everywhere. Earlier today, I read an article on the Detroit News that shared a horrific experience of an eighth grader at Tappan Middle School who asked the school counselor if he could go out to drink water. She told him no, and when he asked why, she said, "I don't negotiate with terrorists." After he expressed his hurt being a Palestinian-American, she turned to the other adults in the room, who instead of protecting the student from further harm, affirmed what she said and agreed that "this is a phrase we use all the time." Where is the accountability, and why is the dehumanization of Arab and Muslim children being normalized? I'm therefore calling on this council to pass a resolution with input from us, the people, that holds our leadership accountable to protect the most vulnerable of us, home and abroad, humanitarian aid workers, hospital personnel, teachers, students, children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abraham Raskin.
Abraham Raskin, if you're still on Zoom, can you press star nine to raise your hand? Phone number ending in 036. Waiting for caller Abraham Raskin. Mayor, I believe this caller has hung up.
Just now.
Ah, a few minutes ago.
Okay.
My name is Christine Abuzar, and I'm a native-born Michigander, and I've been a part of the Ann Arbor community since 1986. I've appeared before this council many times before. This time, there is so much to say, I hardly know what to say, and I hardly knew which of my signs to bring tonight. You'll see that I chose the sign justice, for that simply is, in essence, what the Palestinians need. That said, I want to move on to thanking the members of this city council and the group of community members who have written proposed wording for a ceasefire resolution. Even though the topic is not on the agenda tonight, I think it should have been. In reference to these two resolutions, I have read the drafts, I would like to encourage and actually insist that the authors be careful with the wordings, because words matter. For example, the very first sentence of the city resolution proposal begins, and I quote, "On October 7, 2023, Hamas terrorists killed..." And here from the get-go, a bias is interwoven into the wording of the document. Please keep in mind that citizens of an occupied land do have the right to resist occupation. A more objective wording would be Hamas fighters or the Hamas militia. Another section of the resolution quotes condemns the actions of Hamas. A balanced wording would reference condemnation of war crimes on either side. For myself and my communities, I do insist that fairness be applied in the wording of any resolution. The choice of words must reflect justice. Along these lines, I stand firm before you, and I state that anti-Zionism does not equal antisemitism. We must say the truth, not tiptoe around reality. If the reality is occupation, annexation, oppression, racism, apartheid, war crimes, ethnic cleansing, genocide, then we should state that reality. We have the right to stand up and to say it like it is. Indeed, we have the responsibility to stand up and say it like it is. So here I am, and here we are. It's been a lot of years, from the Nakba through the First Intifada, the Second Intifada to now and everything in between. The Arab and Muslim community members understand what I'm saying. I'm sure that the older activists in this community understand what I'm saying as well. We're here for the long haul. It was hard to choose my sign. I chose justice.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dylan
...of Michigan and a Jewish resident of Ann Arbor. In the company of the Palestinian liberation movement in the city of Ann Arbor, I've been given an opportunity to reassess my relationship to family and faith. The growing student movement at Michigan is led largely by Arab-American and Muslim students, many of them the children of immigrant parents, some immigrants themselves. Throughout American history, immigrant communities have been exploited, vilified, ostracized, and brutalized, a bad American habit. Arab-Americans are subject to the same patterns of discrimination as the Irish, the Chinese, and Italians before them. Not long ago, European Jews were America's inconvenient refugees, subject to immigration quotas and dehumanizing alienation. Nevertheless, we Jews made America our home and built thriving communities all across the country, from Atlantic to Pacific, from Detroit to Ann Arbor. However, the shocking conclusion I've come to is that the American Jewish community has lost touch. We've lost touch with our storied resistance, we've lost touch with our global heritage, and we've lost touch with our Jewish values, owing this largely to the smothering tides of history. This past week was Hanukkah, a celebration of our perseverance through faith. Across millennia and across continents, our resilience and faith in God has allowed us to overcome countless hardships. The modern state of Israel presents us with yet another challenge: to reclaim our history. The Zionist project tells us that we are alone and that we must be afraid. It tells us that Israel is the only sure solution to our safety, and it tells us that Palestinians must die to ensure that safety. The state of Israel transmutes our fears into tools of war, weaponizing antisemitism and leveraging progressive anti-racist politics to justify the genocide in Gaza. The global Jewish community must face reality. We did not come into this world, we came out of it. We are capable of repeating the same patterns of hate, nationalism, and militarism that tore us apart time after time. However, we can reverse these patterns as well. We can shake the status quo by showing up in solidarity with our Palestinian brothers and sisters. We can demand our institutions to divest from apartheid states, and tonight, we can call upon our elected officials to lead the way for a ceasefire. If the Ann Arbor City Council is to effectively call for a ceasefire, it must accurately address 75 years of occupation by incorporating the language from the community-drafted resolution. Merrick Edelman, a leader of the Warsaw uprising and Holocaust survivor, said, "To be a Jew means always being with the oppressed and never with the oppressor." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Musamil Ahmed.
Caller with the phone number ending in 127. Press star six, unmute your phone. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Dr. Musamil Ahmed. I am a local physician serving this area and have been in and out of Ann Arbor for many years. I also work with MGAGE, which is a civic engagement organization that mobilizes the Muslim and Arab communities here in Michigan and nationally. We were very sorry to see the ceasefire resolution withdrawn from consideration recently. Ann Arbor is known for being a leading moral voice on issues of Ann Arbor is known for being a leading moral voice on issues of the day, and we are among the first to speak out in big issues such as Vietnam, Black Lives Matter, and other big issues that affect our country and our city. In particular, it's very important to speak out about the genocide occurring in Gaza, the ongoing occupation of the Palestinian lands, and also to affirm the humanity of Arabs, Jews, Muslims, Christians, Palestinians, and all those who live in Palestine, who live in Israel, and who live right here in America and right here in Ann Arbor. We have a very diverse community with people from all sides, living as neighbors right here in the city. The dehumanization that needs to occur to justify the violence overseas builds over right here in our own town, where we see antisemitism, Islamophobia, and ongoing bigotry. I appreciate the diverse voices speaking out here today for a ceasefire, and I really encourage the city council to also embrace a ceasefire resolution that recognizes the humanity of all of us and will add to the groundswell of support occurring across the country in small towns, where we tell our elected officials on the national and federal level that we want the violence to stop and a peaceful solution to be forced overseas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Raseem Asthawani.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, and respected council members. I am a physician also, and I serve this community, and I work in the pediatric intensive care unit. And just for the people who have been in that place, we usually receive the sickest of the kids to the ICU, and I experience firsthand the desperation and the fear of the parents faces when they come to us, and they are just looking to us to say, "Is your kid gonna survive or not?" And then out of 100 that comes through the ICU here nationally, we usually have around 2.5% who actually passes away. And I experience firsthand how the devastation for the parents when I sit down with them and tell them, like, "Your kid is not gonna survive this disease or this accident." And just a few days ago, I had to go through this horrible experience, and it's destruct all of us, like, in the ICU when we see a kid who passes away. And I could not not think of 8,000 children in Palestine that they have actually been killed. It's not out of a disease, it's not out of a bad accident, it is out of bombing. And when you think about it, it's like during COVID, we went through horrible scenario, all of us. And during this horrible, like, experience we've experienced, we usually talk, we started talking to the community and telling them, "You guys need to adhere to these guidelines, because one preventable illness and death is huge." But here, we're on 8,000 kids being killed, and we still -- I've been here in Ann Arbor since 2009, and I've been a proud member of this community, and Ann Arbor has been voted as the best-living city in the U.S. multiple times, and still not being able to say, "We are not endorsing a ceasefire," just a humanitarian, like, just think about humanity. We have people who are being killed, and we are still behind our neighbors here in Epsi and in Canton, they have passed this resolution. I would just encourage all of us just to say, just focus on just simple ceasefire, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Baruch.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to come and speak with you. I've actually never been to a city council meeting before, but felt like it was worth coming just to thank you for taking the ceasefire off the agenda tonight. I think that it's pretty clear that there was a ceasefire on October 6, and it was broken on October 7. I know three people who were affected as an understatement, but deeply affected on October 7 in Israel. Two people were taken hostage, one is since released, one's still captive. And then the third person, I actually don't know personally, but it's the aunt of a resident of Ann Arbor. She disappeared on October 7, and it was unclear if she was a hostage or if she was dead. And then several weeks later, the family was notified that forensic analysis showed that a burnt crisp of a body was their aunt, a resident's aunt. No one has asked me, but if I was gonna draft something, it would include many things, including disarmament of Hamas, particularly because they've articulated their intention to repeat the atrocities of October 7, and then also to call for the release of the hostages. As I'm standing in the back here, I recognize that my perspective is different than the perspective of many people in this room, and because of that, again, I thank you for pulling the resolution. I don't think that it's our space to be calling for resolutions on such a contentious issue. Just like the previous speaker, I'm a physician here in Ann Arbor, and regardless of what the person I'm taking care of looks like, regardless of their race, religion, national heritage, whatever it may be, I try to take really good care of them. For all the people in the room, I would try to take really good care of you as well. I would hope that if you're a physician, or a nurse, or a firefighter, or a police person, that you would also take care of me. I think that the work here for us to do is to focus on the work here that we can do. I think that any kind of resolution that you could call for about something that's happening overseas would deeply, deeply, deeply wound one side of this contentious conflict or another. I can speak for myself that it probably would not lead me to leave Ann Arbor, but after living here for about 20 years, if there was a series of similar kinds of things, it would make me feel deeply unwelcome, and it would make me feel like I couldn't be here. It would make me feel like I would have to move. Again, I just want to thank you. I appreciate the time to speak, and I appreciate you pulling the ceasefire from the agenda for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eileen Fried.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Eileen Fried, and for the past 25 years, I've called Ward 2 in Ann Arbor my home. I'm also privileged to serve as the executive director of the Jewish Federation of Greater Ann Arbor, which provides philanthropic leadership and community building to nurture a strong, engaged, connected, caring, vibrant, and enduring Jewish community. Our work focuses on philanthropy, engagement, and convening our religiously, racially, and economically diverse local Jewish community around important communal issues. Sadly, much of our attention and resources lately have been utilized to address growing antisemitism and security threats to our congregations and organizations. When asked by the clerk's office about what topic I wanted to address this evening, the first thing that came to mind was civil discourse. Over the course of the past few council meetings, here and in Ypsilanti, I've seen a disturbing lack of civil discourse, which is not how I would hope people who live and work in our communities should communicate with one another. What I have seen is people who lament being silenced, silencing those with whom they do not agree. I have seen people who are justifiably concerned about the well-being of their relatives and friends in Gaza, demonstrating a remarkable, even intense, lack of compassion for others who are also grieving and worrying about their relatives and friends in Israel or still being held hostage in Gaza, including my friend Keith Segal. I have seen people justify the murder, rape, and taking of hostages of men, women, children, and the elderly by a recognized terror organization as an acceptable, even desirable, act of resistance to Israeli occupation, or worse, denying that these events actually happened. And I have witnessed personal invective against city council people trying to express their concern for all citizens of Ann Arbor. The behavior and language displayed by people who say they feel unsafe and unwelcome fosters fear and intimidation, making other members of this community feel unsafe and unwelcome. I am committed, as you are, to the principle of free speech, but just because speech is legal doesn't mean it's not rude, disrespectful, and at times antisemitic. I'm beginning to wonder if there might be some sort of code of conduct for speech and behavior that could be adopted by this body to ensure that all citizens are able to be seen and heard without being scared to do so. Our city council exists to address the local issues that concern all citizens of Ann Arbor to ensure that Ann Arbor is a safe, pleasant, welcoming, equitable, and inclusive place to live, work, play, and engage in public discourse. It is local people and local issues which I'd like to see them engaged, not spending hours trying to address divisive geopolitical issues and trying to please people who do not demonstrate respect to the work of this body nor their fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. By my clock, we have run through our 45 minutes, and so the balance of the speakers will have an opportunity to speak at public comment overflow, which will occur after the entirety of the business portion of our meeting. Are there communications today from council? Councilmember Gazi Edwin.
Thank you for so many of the community for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts. You know, I just, I want to talk a little bit about the resolution and what happened. So firstly, I understand that some language could have been changed or strengthened in the resolution, and the reason that it was pulled tonight was because despite all the time and effort that my colleagues and I put into a balanced resolution, despite the hours of conversation we had with community members on both sides of the issue, it was clear that more time was needed for more input, and more time was needed to review and reflect on our call for peace in Ann Arbor and abroad. Resolutions of this kind are important for people to be able to see themselves in it, and it's important for them to be nonpartisan. More work is needed, and it fell short in many ways. I am dedicated to ensuring that any continued conversation that I am involved in about this topic, I will ensure that different communities will be present and represented with dignity. Ann Arbor is known for being a community that always speaks up when others are marginalized, and we protect the most vulnerable among us, and this council will continue to work together to address the needs of our community. I understand that a resolution will bring some comfort to the families here in Ann Arbor that feel hurt, feel scared, unheard, and who are losing loved ones. I also join the United Nations, many state representatives, including Congressmember Debbie Dingell and Rashida Tlaib, many of our labor unions, in support of a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. I also condemn the actions of Hamas on October 7, and I hope and pray for lasting peace in Israel and Palestine and in our community. Thank you.
Further communication from council? Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, it's difficult to know what to say in a moment like this. First, I'd like to thank everybody who's made time in their night to come to a city council meeting, to speak, to show support for those that they love here, abroad, for those who are speaking. We have, I'd also like to thank councilmember Gazi Edwin, who's been trying, has really been listening over the last couple of months and working very hard to try to find a way to bring voice to the very many different perspectives that are in this room. And it's, as you can hear just from a few comments, so very difficult. We know that this is a local issue. It's been clear from just the few comments that were made how very deeply this is impacting people, lives that are lost, friends that have been killed, hostages that have been taken, 30 family members dead. We've heard in our last meeting of people being yelled at on their bike, we're hearing tonight of children in the schools, at the university, there's doxxing. We know that this is a profoundly profound issue for our community, and I wish that we had, you know, as Congresswoman Dingell has been saying, we need a ceasefire, we need the hostages need to be released. There is a profound humanitarian crisis that's happening in our world, and it's made its way into this room. And so I thank you for coming tonight. I will leave it, I guess, at that, in that, you know, I will continue to meet with community members. We recognize that as a resolution of this magnitude, the language of it is very impactful. The words need, the nuance in them is particularly impactful across different communities. And as try as we might, as one might be able to predict, it's very challenging to come to a good resolution within a short period of time. And for those who suggest that there is a community resolution that we could have just sort of adopted and done that, I recognize the desire to do that. Unfortunately, it's very atypical for us just to take a resolution from the community and sort of adopt it. There's really a different sort of approach that takes, that we take to bring forward a resolution that requires a lot more community buy-in. So anyway, I'll continue working to respond to emails that have come into my inbox and conversations that need to be had.
Councilmember Ackman.
I wanted to start by acknowledging everyone in this room tonight and everyone that's come to our past couple meetings. The ongoing conflict in Gaza is a heart-wrenching reminder of the profound cost of war, and I'm also horrified to see the tragic loss of life and the devastating impact on both Palestinians and Israelis. The situation underscores the urgent need for compassion, understanding, and a relentless pursuit of peace. Every life lost is a universe extinguished, every injured person a dream altered, and every displaced family a story of despair. It's a situation that calls for empathy and shared commitment to end this suffering and forge a path to a peaceful coexistence. So I understand that Ann Arbor is geographically distant from Gaza and Israel. The emotional and social impact of the conflict is palpable in this room and our community. It's having a profound impact on all of us, many have friends, family. A loved one's suffering, someone who has family ties to the region, I do empathize with your pain. But what's more, I'm deeply troubled by the alarming increase in anti-Arab, Islamophobic, and antisemitic rhetoric and actions that are occurring both locally and nationally. I don't pretend to know the solution for a lasting peace, I really don't, but I know there's a lot of pain being felt throughout our community, and that pains me deeply. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Adina.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everybody who's come tonight and spoken and shared their views with us by email and phone call and here at the meeting. I know that we've heard from many that it doesn't feel like we're always listening, but I think, I hope that you can see that we are all trying to stay engaged and to listen and to do what we can to reduce harm and pain that's being caused. And while there's not a resolution on our agenda this evening, after spending the last several weeks speaking with and listening to constituents and community members, in my limited capacity as a council member, many of you already know that I joined voices across the country in individually calling for an immediate bilateral ceasefire agreement to end the violence in Israel and Gaza, a release of all hostages, and for critical and significant humanitarian aid to the Palestinian people who are suffering without access to basic need like food, water, medicine, and medical supplies. I've also shared this view with our federal representatives, who are best positioned to impact U.S. foreign policy. The ongoing toll of this war is disproportionately impacting innocents who simply wish to live in peace and security, and as my council colleagues have expressed, the loss of life is incredibly tragic. And as my council colleagues have expressed, the loss of life is incredibly tragic. While this future seems to be slipping away, I do still hope for a free and independent Palestine that can exist alongside a free and independent Israel, where people of all backgrounds and religious beliefs can live securely and in peace. I do, and this, I am sorry if this is controversial, but I do believe that that requires, and I want to uplift Congresswoman Dingell's statement, that it requires a durable two-state solution that achieves lasting peace and the stability of the region includes removing Hamas from operational control of Gaza. Finally, while the Ann Arbor City Council does not have direct influence over U.S. foreign policy or have purview over international affairs, it is clear that the impacts of the Israel-Hamas war are being felt by our local community. Residents have shared heartbreaking stories of loss and multi-generational pain and trauma. They've expressed increased feelings of fear, anxiety, frustration, and anger. They feel less safe on their campus and around our community. And far too many Ann Arborites have shared that they're feeling targeted because of their religion or ethnic and cultural identity. I have a deep love and respect for our Muslim and Jewish communities and have been incredibly grateful to join in local events like Community Iftar and Pride Shabbat during my time on council. It brings me great pain to know that our Muslim, Jewish, Palestinian, Arab, and Israeli neighbors are suffering, and I remain firmly committed to working with anyone towards our shared goals of healing community division, combating rising levels of hate, and preventing hate-based violence from occurring locally. Thank you.
Further communication from counsel? I've spoken on a number of occasions about the conflict overseas and the conflict here at home, and would, I guess, just like to again restate that I and we at the council table understand that this is, that this is just so deeply wrenching for so many of us. And it is just so, it affects and rocks communities in Ann Arbor that are so important to who we are. Our challenge at the table is that our primary responsibility is to the community as a whole. And when the community as a whole is in hurt and conflict and turmoil, then we too, to a certain degree, are in hurt and turmoil and are hindered in our ability to assist and provide direct comfort because it is our obligation to speak when we speak for everyone. It's, in this context in particular, it's not, well, it's never, it's rarely an easy task, and in this context, it is particularly difficult, but it is one that we are constantly trying to accomplish, and this is no exception. You know, as I go forward and as I hope others do too, you know, when so many in Ann Arbor are in such tremendous pain, I think the crucial, the crucial way, the only path that any promise of community resolution, of community togetherness, even in the presence of division, of community peace, and that is to recognize, you know, our common humanity. And as each of us thinks through of our experiences and our connections and our griefs, that as we share and those griefs, that we recognize that we are not alone in it and that we must, as we go forward, as we speak our own griefs, that we must also share and acknowledge the grief of others. I'd like to request the following appointment that was presented to counsel for consideration at the December 4 regular session to the Leslie Science and Nature Center Board of Directors, Teresa Perloski. Move by, Councilmember Cornell, second by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. We have before us the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Move by, Councilmember Song, second by Councilmember Watson. Discussion. Councilmember Briggs?
Just a couple of, just a couple of items on the consent agenda that I just wanted to note some excitement about. First one is CA 4 and 5, which is the extending a portion of the border-to-border trail. This has been a longtime effort. This is part one of a part-two project to extend a trail through the Barton Nature Area and eventually to the Vandemere Underpass. So that's, that's an exciting beginning. Well, I'm going to leave it there right now. Thanks.
It has been reminded that we do have a staff introduction with respect to... Thank you, CA 11 and 12. I believe it is the indomitable Ms. Roth.
Ms. Roth is joining us on Zoom.
Hello, counsel. Hello, Mayor.
So I'm the one that requested the staff introductions. I'm not sure if she wanted to give a preamble or...
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear Ms. Roth. I believe you have the question set?
Yeah, certainly. Did you, I don't know if I missed anything. Did you want me to give an introduction first of the programs or just answer specific questions from Councilmember Ackman?
I think it's helpful. Sorry.
Do you have the questions in front of you from Councilwoman Ackman? If you could just answer those?
Certainly. So my understanding is the questions resolved around the use of third-party administrator for both the rebate program as well as the Home Energy Advisor Program and the cost of each. Is that, is that correct, Councilmember?
Yes, understanding why the external contract is the right approach to this and the relative balance of the administrative cost to the actual, you know, rebate program. Just if you could kind of walk us through that.
Absolutely, no problem. So as you know, both of these programs are brought to you as part of A20. So the Home Energy Advisor Program is named out in the A20 Plan, the 44 Actions. It's referred to as a concierge. And the rebate program is explicitly called out in the Climate Action Milledge passed last November. So both programs are brought to you today to implement, which we're very excited about. The reason for third-party administration of each, I'll start with the rebate administrator. So the rebate program total budget is approximately in the range of $1.8 million, and the cost to administer the program is approximately $200,000 per year. So it's, I don't know, in the 10% range or less, I believe, of $1.88 million per year in total budget. The rest of it will be utilized directly for rebates, for energy efficiency, electrification, solar, and resilience measures for residents. The reason that we're going to an outside administrator for this is because it's a best practice. We've worked with multiple different cities across the country who have rebate programs to learn from them. For example, Denver, whose rebate administrator has been working with them to launch approximately 839 home energy rebate projects in a year, and we're looking at launching 2,500 or so rebates in a year. So the scale of the program is pretty big. The rebate administrator will be accepting, reviewing, approving applicants, will be reviewing contractors and equipment. They will be doing income verification for income-qualified rebates. They'll be auditing vendors and completing quality control. There'll be receipt of potentially sensitive information about residents, including income qualification. And all of these things, we believe are best served from an external administrator. We don't have the capacity to scale in this way and to meet sort of what we anticipate will be great demand, as well as to make sure that the program meets resident expectations in terms of quick turnaround of rebates and so forth. So we look to a third party who has done this, exactly this sort of program. So we are not inventing the wheel. The wheel has already been invented, and we are hiring those who can administer it much more quickly and effectively than we can. Similar with the Home Energy Advisor, which we're very, very excited about, same thing. We are anticipating high demand for this service to reduce the complexity of home electrification and decarbonization, kind of a one-stop shop where residents can access experts who can help do home assessments, to give them individualized decarbonization plans, contractor connections, identify appropriate rebates and incentives, and so forth. And the number of residents we anticipate accessing this service goes well beyond what we could scale up to do in-house. The fact that we are looking to Walker Miller Energy Services to help us with this program, they already have deep experience with residential energy programs. They also have a deep bench of BPI-certified energy assessors. So there should be smooth rollout regardless of fluctuating demand, fluctuating staffing and so forth, so that residents of Ann Arbor can have a more consistent experience. I could go on, but I guess that's the short version.
Thank you. Further discussion of the consent agenda. Councilmember Adina?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to briefly call out CA 1 and CA 2, which are the first properties from our Green Belt to be resold under the Buy, Protect, Sell program, which is hopefully going to be, this will be a really great start in starting to provide farmers, new starting farmers with access to affordable farmland. One of the successes of our Green Belt is that as we acknowledge that around our housing challenges here in the city, that we are striving for increased housing within the city, one of the things that we also do is preserve farmland and farm, and land around Ann Arbor. We've preserved 70, over 7,600 acres since 2003. And I also just want to really thank our staff, our Green Belt staff and our Green Belt Advisory Commission for their hard work in getting the sale of these first two properties through this program to us. They took the scoring of this, of these properties incredibly seriously and really evaluated it, all in our public commission meetings for folks to participate in, so that we could make sure that we had some really strong farmers taking these properties and hopefully having success long into the future. So thanks.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ackman?
I just wanted to speak to what we just heard about from Ms. Roth, and thank you so much for that introduction. I mean, what I gather from what she said is the contract to run the rebate program is really going to help us make sure that people know what they can take advantage of, navigate that process, make sure that people are qualified for that, make sure that we're supporting income-qualified residents. So to me, this makes complete sense with our ambitions to offer rebates across a number of areas. And then as far as the contract with the Home Energy Advisor Program, I've heard from a lot of residents that want help navigating just how you go about installing a different kind of heating system. Ms. Roth knows about my own personal experience with this. It's just quite challenging to just use traditional companies in the area to navigate this, and there's a lot of misinformation. And so I've heard directly from people who have been waiting for this program, and I'm excited that it's coming. Thank you.
Further discussion? I am, I too just want to echo very briefly my enthusiasm about CA 11, CA 12, the Energy Concierge, and the administration of the Home Energy Advisor Program. With the passage of the Community Climate Action Milledge by the community back in 2022, we, of course, enabled our A20 Department, the Office of Sustainability and Innovation, to roll out programs for the purpose of encouraging and empowering residents to themselves improve the energy efficiency, the energy use within their, within their homes. These two programs, the rolling out of residential rebates and the Energy Advisor Program, will be an important and substantial step in that direction. Particularly in my view, I'm excited about the rebate program because this is an opportunity for residents to have a double win. With the advisor services, letting them know what rebates perhaps are available, and the rebate that we are going to be ourselves providing with the Community Climate Action Milledge, this will naturally layer on top of the Biden-Harris Administration's Inflation Reduction Act rebates, which are already incredibly substantial and to encourage, you know, homeowners and others to purchase appliances and other energy, energy, creation and storage materials so as to make their homes as carbon-friendly as possible. It's a visionary program by the administration, and I'm just so excited that we here in Ann Arbor are able to utilize our own Community Climate Action Milledge as a multiplier to make Ann Arbor take even greater steps towards our A20 goals. Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved with nine council members present, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA 1, CA 2, CA 4, CA 9, CA 10. We now come to a set of public hearings. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council in the community about the specific subject matter of the public hearing. Speakers at public hearings do not need to have signed up in advance, but your speech at the public hearing must relate to the subject matter of the public hearing. That is to say, the specific item on the agenda to which the public hearing relates. Speakers in all instances here in the room and online will have three minutes in which to speak. Here, your time will be monitored by the buzzer in front of you. Online and at home, our clerk will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. In each case, when your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. It was observed that there are folks downstairs who are not here at present, who may yet wish to speak at a public hearing. I guess in response to that, I'd just like to say that there are some spaces available. While I'm not taking count, and I'm not in charge of how many people can be in this room, I'll observe that there has been some clear-out. And so if anyone downstairs is wishing to speak at one of these public hearings, there could well be a seat for you. In any event, the internet is a great and wonderful thing, and people from all over the world have an opportunity to speak at our public hearings through the magic of Zoom. And that extends, of course, to our community members in the basement, community members in the lobby. I don't think anybody's in the basement. Public hearing number one. An ordinance to add Chapter 55 leaf blower to Title VI of the city code. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak at this public hearing? Please just come on up. Yeah, by all means, yeah, the protocol is just come up and speak.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and board members. I am assured by my fellow members that this topic is not important by the presence of everyone here. However, I do have some thoughts and concerns. My name is Carson. I am the owner and founder of Three Brothers Lawn Care. I've been working in the city of Ann Arbor for three years. I am all in favor of electric leaf blowers. At this time, I do not feel like there is an adequate alternative. I believe that Section 704, Item 3, speaks strongly to that, suggesting that any work around recreational facilities, golf courses, playing fields, can use the industrial equipment that I would be limited to not using. I feel that until there is an adequate solution, I really would suggest that the council postpone this until further time. this until further time. This would cause a, would be financially challenging to my business. I would face about $25,000 to $45,000 in leaf blower investment, and that's not even to something that's comparable to what we're using right now. We have about $5,000 to $6,000 in leaf blowing equipment. The purpose of leaf blowing equipment that we use is to do exactly that, of protect the safety of the common areas of the city of Ann Arbor. Most commonly used, cleaning up after mulching or small rock projects where there could be small debris, and these blowers are used to do exactly that, of protect the areas from people tripping or having unclean common walkways. That is, will conclude my thoughts. I hope there's further conversation and consideration of this topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Council Jeff Heiner, Ward 1. I came down here because I was co-sponsor of the original downtown leaf blower ban a couple of years back, and my eye test was that it didn't really make a difference. And it doesn't mean it's, we shouldn't do it, but it didn't seem to make a difference. And this gentleman who just spoke before me brought up an important point about the carve-out for certain types of properties. And I live across from Northside Park and Northside School, and aside from the carve-out, there's also some mention in here about the time usage, and I was, it was nice to see it get centered up with the current noise ordinance. However, the city of Ann Arbor, all summer, every Sunday morning at 8:00 a.m. shows up to mow and leaf below Northside Park in violation of the noise ordinance. And actually, some other ones that we have. And I never made the call because I don't want to turn our city into a little Stasi crowd with our A2fix-it. But, you know, I don't like it, and so I would like the city to take care of their own business first before they start putting it on these folks. I was at the, I can vouch for what this guy says. Sometimes I use a leaf blower when we do roofing projects. Do you have to keep it safe up there, keep all the dust off? And so we just run up there with a blower. I have a, I have an EGO mower and a line trimmer, and fortunately, I found them at a yard sale for 75 bucks because I heard they're quite expensive. And so I went to find a, when my, almost serviced me for 30 years, leaf blower that I bought from a city auction when I first moved back here in the 90s. When that thing finally died, my gas-powered one, I went for a electric one to match my ecosystem, and the electric ones were $230, and the plug-in one was 30 bucks. But I can't be tripping over cord on a roof, you know? And I didn't have the 200 bucks, so I overhauled my gas blower, and I hoped to use it for many years. Now, one thing I want to say, I've heard a few things where it's been said, oh, the exhaust that's the size of a pencil on these steel leaf blowers is, makes more, you know, emissions than a Ford F-150, whatever that is. And that speaks more to the quality and the work that the engineers at Ford have done into their emission controls than it does to the pollution of these leaf blowers. I just wanted to get that straight. These things don't make much noise at all. So I just, you know, I'm happy to see things that happened in the previous body come forward, and I just felt I should come out and speak to that. I don't discourage this kind of thing, and I also hope to see the Pilot Program Subcommittee and the Office of the Ombuds person come forward to other resolutions that were passed on previous councils. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
I have one question. Yes. When should we expect a resolution for the City Council?
I'm sorry, ma'am, this, we cannot have conversations between council members and the audience at this time.
Because people comment that this will happen on Monday.
There was no such promise, ma'am. I'm sorry. Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak in support of Palestine.
Ma'am, ma'am, this is not an opportunity to speak about Palestine. This is a public hearing which relates exclusively to an ordinance to add Chapter 55 leaf blowers to the city council, to the city code. This is not an opportunity for other subject matters to come up.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Again, to restate with respect to an ordinance to add Chapter 55 leaf blowers to Title VI of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Taylor. Ken Garber, Second Ward. Yeah, I can't speak on leaf blowers without acknowledging the much more urgent concerns around the death and destruction happening in Gaza as we speak. That said, I commend Councilmembers Cornell, Ackman, and Iyer for bringing this leaf blower ordinance forward. Obvious reasons for it include the extreme noise pollution, incredibly dirty exhaust, and the respiratory health effect of blown dust and debris. This is an obsolete technology. Two-stroke engines lack an independent lubrication system, so oil is mixed with fuel. This leads to incomplete combustion with up to a third of the fuel spewed into the air as unburned aerosol. So while these machines are light and powerful, they're crazily inefficient and incredibly polluting. They don't put out a lot of CO2, but instead huge amounts of carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, and non-methane hydrocarbons. Nitrogen oxides and non-methane hydrocarbons get converted to ozone, which in the lower atmosphere is a powerful greenhouse gas. So you just heard about the famous statistic that a two-stroke leaf blower emits nearly 300 times more non-methane hydrocarbons than a, in a given unit time than a Ford F-150 Raptor. That is not due to any fuel efficiency for the Raptor. It's due to the obscene pollution put out by these belching monsters. These are not devices that add to the safety of the community in any way, contrary to what the gentleman from the lawn care company said. They detract from it in all the ways I spoke about. And there is an alternative readily available, electric leaf blowers, either corded or battery-powered. So elimination of these two-stroke leaf blowers from our city, besides sparing everybody the roar of their engines and the blown debris, will have a positive climate impact. But there's another problem with leaf blowers besides that. They damage biodiversity. Fallen leaves provide protection for overwintering insects and insect egg sacs. Any leaf blower will dislodge the cover, harming insects, which in turn are essential to birds and other wildlife. The thing to do with fallen leaves is to mulch them with a lawnmower, if you have a turf grass lawn, which in fact, you shouldn't, but that's an entirely separate conversation. Anyway, to conclude, I, again, I don't mean in this statement to in any way trivialize the much more important concerns that are shared by all the people in this room, and I want to thank all of them for showing up, and I hope as many of you as possible get heard tonight.
Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, we have a few callers online. Caller with the phone number ending in 808. Press star six to unmute your phone.
Mayor Taylor and City Council members, my name is Joan Kellenberg. I've lived in Ann Arbor for 20 years, and I'm a Ward 2 resident. I am also a 35-plus-year public health professional. I feel strongly that gas-powered leaf blowers should be banned from use in Ann Arbor for these reasons. One, they turn significant hazardous emissions into the environment. Two, they create substantial year-round noise pollution, which negatively impacts city residents, landscaping workers, and wildlife. Three, they exacerbate underlying health conditions in children and adults with respiratory illnesses, including asthma, COPD, COVID-19, and other illnesses. And four, they create hazardous conditions for residents who exercise outdoors on city sidewalks and streets. Last December, after the Ann Arbor Climate Millage passed, I wrote to Mayor Taylor proposing that a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers be considered by council in 2023. I had an unfortunate encounter with a landscaping company in my neighborhood as I was walking my dog when a gas-powered leaf blower from 20 feet away was aimed at us as we walked by. Debris went into both my eyes and into my mouth. Thankfully, my dog was not impacted. But unfortunately, the employer, employee from the landscaping company did not stop when I indicated my distress. I enthusiastically support Councilmembers Cornell, Ackman, and Iyer for proposing an ordinance that will preserve Ann Arbor's air quality, protect its residents' health, and protect the environment, including the city's bird population and its many pollinators. Gas-powered leaf blowers create substantial, preventable environmental and public health hazards. It is time for Ann Arbor to join over 150 municipalities across the U.S. that now limit or prohibit the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Juskavich, do you have a comment?
Yeah, hi. This is Adam Juskavich from the Fourth Ward. I would just like to echo the statement of Mr. Garber that we really have more important things to talk about here, but I think this is a really simple, easy, and straightforward resolution, and you should pass it tonight. I don't think it needs a whole lot of fanfare or discussion. I think this is low-hanging fruit, and it's totally reasonable, and let's just do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Lowenstein, do you have a comment?
Yes. I want to thank the council members who have proposed this ordinance and those who will vote for it. I think this is exactly the kind of thing that the council should be discussing because it has an impact on the health and safety of everybody in Ann Arbor. The others have spoken to some of the environmental concerns, which are significant. In addition, I think everybody who has gone by somebody using one of these leaf blowers has thought to themselves, gee, this person is wearing a gasoline backpack. That can't be good. And in fact, it's not. You know, some people may think, oh, this is just one of these goofy Ann Arbor ordinances. But Ann Arbor's not alone. There are other cities in the country that have banned these leaf blowers because of the health hazards, including Washington, D.C. And I think one thing that just can't be escaped is that the vast majority of these yard workers and people who are working out there in all conditions are immigrants from Central America. These people are exploited often. I don't know what kind of wages they make, but I'm sure it's not what they should. And these, they are people who can't speak back. They're desperate for these jobs, and I think they would tell us that they are happy to not be abused by having to wear gasoline backpacks and be endangered every day just because they're doing their jobs. So I really appreciate it. I appreciate what the others who have spoken to the facts have said, especially the professor in public health. And I encourage everyone to vote for this, and I'm very grateful that you're doing the job of watching out for our health and safety.
Alex Lowe, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Alex Lowe calling in from Ward 3. To be honest, I wasn't going to talk about it at this public hearing. It doesn't really affect me, but the very precious defense of leaf blowers got me a little bit irritated, especially of gasoline leaf blowers. I was 11 years old when I realized that gasoline leaf blowers even existed. I had been, I had been using electric ones as a child, helping out with garden care, not only for my family, but for neighbors. The idea that we absolutely need to burn more fossil fuels for these strikes both my 11-year-old self and my current 33-year-old self is kind of ridiculous, and so I'm glad to see the city doing this. Thank you.
John Calwerke, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and City Council members. My name is John Calwerke, and I'm a resident of Ward 2, and I've lived in Ann Arbor for over 20 years. I'm a member of the City of Ann Arbor Environmental Commission, but my comments tonight as part of the public hearing on gas-powered leaf blower ban are solely my own. I first want to thank the ordinance sponsors for their efforts to bring this ordinance forward. It is well thought out in terms of purpose, seasonality, and phasing, although I wish the timeline could be shortened from four years to two years. I also appreciate the revisions that have been made to clarify timing and penalty elements of the ordinance. I ask you to support this ordinance for the improvements it will make for workers, neighbors, wildlife, and our community overall. Let's add Ann Arbor to the hundreds of other communities that have already passed similar ordinance and promote the city's sustainability goals by reducing noise, pollution, and other negative effects from gas-powered leaf blowers. Thank you.
Mayor, do you have any other callers on the line with their hands raised?
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two. An ordinance to amend the zoning map, being part of Section 5.10.2 of Chapter 55 of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Zoning of 5.9 acres from TWP Township District to R4A Multifamily Dwelling District, 2520 Pontiac Trail and 2540 Pontiac Trail. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Hi there, I'm going to speak to this. It's a couple of blocks up the street from my house. This really is mostly for the public's benefit. A lot of folks come and they say, you know, why are we getting these projects that don't fit in with, say, our A2-Zero plan or our environmental goals or our transit goals or these other things? And the excuse that we always hear is, oh, it's a buy-right project. Once it's zoned a certain way, they have the right to build that, however poorly it suits our needs. So the only opportunity that this body has to get the kinds of projects that we want in this city that support all those goals is when a developer asks for a rezoning when a parcel is annexed into the city. And so if we give away a rezoning, we create a buy-right project, and the developer is thereby allowed to build whatever they want. Now, this one's all tangled up in this project because we let them take it in parcels, and this is attached to 70-some acres that right now stands as the greenest remaining and largest continuous green space in the city of Ann Arbor. And we're going to hear some, when it comes to the plan, we're going to hear some excuses as to why this makes that project better. But I want the public to know that this body failed them when it allowed the rezoning of the other 70 acres adjacent to this, and I strongly anticipate they are about to fail us again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Ken Garber again. So I went back and checked, and this is the 15th time I've spoken on this large development, going back to December 2021. Annexations, rezonings, brownfield plan, site plans, zoning variance. I've only ever asked for one thing: all-electric heat, no fossil gas. Now, I'm going to address the zoning a little indirectly. First of all, there are good things about this project. Above all that, it provides needed housing. But overall, the village is a failure both of public policy and private imagination. The 440 gas-burning apartments will dump 2,738 metric tons CO2-equivalent emissions in the atmosphere each year just from gas. Taking into account reduced driving emissions from converting commuters into residents does reduce that number, but only by one-third at most. It doesn't change the overall picture. And anyway, we should be eliminating both commutes and fossil fuel heating, not just one. Now, you may argue that the perfect should not be the enemy of the good, and that council must make trade-offs. They were better off with housing, even gas-heated, than without. Normally, I would agree, but the climate demands a different calculus. Remember that CO2 stays in the atmosphere for centuries, heating the planet. So a decision to install new fossil fuel infrastructure, like the one you'll be making tonight, has a very long tail, at least 20 generations. That's the reality of the science. What could we possibly trade off for that that would be worth it? Okay, the zoning. Looking back, we should have declined the owner's original annexation request until they could find a developer willing to meet the city's standards. Such developers are out there, and they want to build in Ann Arbor. Maybe we'd lose a couple years of housing, but we would have prevented several centuries of planet-heating greenhouse gases. It's not too late. You should postpone both this rezoning and site plan vote tonight and ask the developer to meet with OSI, perhaps Julie Roth, who's become an expert on this subject, and maybe also with Energy Commission Chair Claire McKenna, an engineer who's worked on private-sector all-electric building projects in the Boston area. Let's find a solution that will meet our city's climate goals while still allowing this project to go forward, because we do need the housing. But first, we must stop the bleeding from new construction in terms of greenhouse gases so we can begin the much harder task of converting our vast existing building stock from gas furnaces to electric heat pumps, using programs like the rebate program that was discussed earlier tonight, which is an excellent program. But that's where our resources need to go. And so I'll be also speaking on the site plan, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Skylar July. I'm from Old Westside. I've lived in Ann Arbor just over a year. I do apologize, this wasn't necessarily planned, but I want to echo the concerns with the zoning, especially given the heating regulations. This summer, as you're all familiar with, we had nearly a month of smoke from wildfires, and right now, we're a week away from Christmas, and there's no snow on the ground. It's obvious that climate change is an immediate concern, and we need to stop it. And that includes, you know, eliminating the progression of new zoning laws, which would, new zoning propositions, which would create these houses with the electric heat, or, I'm sorry, with the gas heat. And I would like to conclude in saying that no amount of CO2 emissions created by the proposition is going to surpass the damage which is done right now with the warplanes and the bombs in Gaza.
Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Alex Lowe, do you have a comment?
Hi, this is Alex Lowe from Ward 3. As much as I respect Mr. Garber's opinion, I think that he's giving a false dichotomy saying this is between fossil fuel-powered commutes and fossil fuel-powered heating. I understand why he sees it that way, but from my perspective, this isn't a choice between those two or eliminating fossil fuels for both. The choice that the city council has before it is rarely between housing with fossil fuel-powered heating, as this would allow, and housing with fossil fuel-powered commutes plus fossil fuel-powered heating plus less efficient building forms because the buildings are going to be built out in the townships using the less energy-efficient types of buildings that typically get built in the townships versus within Ann Arbor. My request to the city, though, is that let's not settle for R4A. I understand there's a site plan attached to it, but I see no reason why we should limit this location to 10 dwelling units per acre as R4A does. Why not just allow it to go all the way up to R4E? Thank you.
Luis Vasquez, do you have a comment?
Yes. Greetings, Ann Arbor City Council. Luis Vasquez, I live in Upper Lower Town in the 1st Ward, practically around the corner from this proposed rezoning. I just wanted to speak very briefly in favor of the rezoning. We are still in a rather severe housing crisis in Ann Arbor and in many communities across the country, and this rezoning will allow some of that crisis to be alleviated, however small that may be. And I encourage you to support the rezoning, my council members in the 1st Ward, and hope it passes tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, do you have any other callers on the line with their hands up for this hearing?
Seeing no one, public hearing number two is closed. Public hearing number three, resolution to approve the Village of Ann Arbor Site Plan at 1710 Duvaran Road. Is there anyone in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Hello. My name is Rich Fine. I live in Ward 5. I'm here representing the Ann Arbor chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby. Citizens Climate Lobby of Ann Arbor opposes the Village of Ann Arbor Phase 2 Site Plan because of its use of natural gas for space and water heating instead of electric heat pump technology. In 2020, Ann Arbor Council unanimously approved the A20 plan with the goal to achieve a just transition to carbon neutrality by 2030. That was more than three and a half years ago. If we were on target for implementing policies to reach that goal, the Village Phase 2 Site Plan would not be approved in its current form. We would not be approving construction with natural gas appliances with a useful life of 15 years or more when our deadline for achieving carbon neutrality is only seven years away. We all know that under current Michigan law, it's difficult to impose restrictions on construction with natural gas. But in Ann Arbor, where innovators and enterprising problem solvers flourish, we believe that we can find incentives and restrictions that either could not or would not be blocked by state law. Developers want to build in Ann Arbor, and building with all-electric is not stopping them. Many developments are being proposed and approved with all-electric. They're happening all over the place, not only here, all over the East Coast. Most new developments, especially for affordable housing, are being built all-electric. There's no current evidence that developers of multifamily communities will flee to the townships if prodded to build all-electric, especially if they are incentivized. In June, council passed a resolution for the city administrator and staff to identify incentives to increase emissions reductions with a deadline to present those proposed incentives by December 31st. We look forward, we need and look forward to seeing recommendations that will have real impact in reducing the use of natural gas in both multifamily and commercial new construction. Thank you.
Hi. My name is David Gurk. I'm from the 5th Ward, and I'm representing Washnak Climate Reality. I'd like to piggyback on some of the things that Rich just said, also speaking about the approval resolution for the Village of Ann Arbor and the broader issue of building electrification. We know that after talks with the building committee, Robertson Brothers agreed to make the condominium section of the complex all-electric. And that's great, and we want to thank everybody who was involved in effectuating that change. And I mean that sincerely, because that is a big step forward. The problem is that the rest of the complex will be heated by natural gas furnaces, and in 2023, that's simply not good enough. It's great, in general, to have a glass-half-full attitude. That's a good philosophy to go through life with, but there are some circumstances under which that does not apply. When it comes to fighting climate change in 2023, we've got to treat it as the emergency that it is. Half measures will not suffice. Now, we're not naive. We know that the powers of city government are limited, and that you cannot compel builders to go all-electric. But that makes it all the more imperative to be inventive, to find a way. Certainly, there must be a way to incentivize going all-electric. And Rich just talked about the fact that there was a resolution some time ago that you would come up with such incentives and that they would be ready to go by the end of this month. The important thing here is that we not be satisfied with baby steps. We're in a situation where we must make a clean break with fossil fuels. Heat records are being demolished on a monthly basis, and 2023 will be the hottest year on record by far. So 2023 must also be the point at which we no longer accept incremental progress in the transition to clean energy and clean buildings. It must also be the year that we break from the past and the old ways of doing things. So I'm just asking you again to find a way, be inventive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Well, those were the two most compelling comments I think I've heard on this topic in the four years I was on council and two years hereafter. I think they're absolutely correct. This is a loser of a project for the city. We have an A20 plan that I voted to move forward, and then we had a millage. And we're giving the city hundreds of millions of dollars to implement this plan. And what's going to happen when we keep passing on doing that and we don't act quickly enough is all that money is going to be going to buy carbon credits at the end so we can pat ourselves on the back and pretend we did something. And I think that's a shame, because we know how these millages increase the cost of living. So when you talk about affordable housing, you've got to think about the millages, too. The notion that we're afraid to hold out for something better is just beyond me. We live in a state that has the perfect climate for shared geothermal. The university builds everything now with shared geothermal. They're making a difference. They're sticking to their climate plan. Why can't we? I think there's been only like three occasions in the two years or so that this council sat here that they've said no to anything, and it has always been no to little internal squabbles. This council's voted yes, 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 yes on everything, especially housing. And so some people out there in the community have the vibe that the city's being sold, and not even to the highest bidder, to the next bidder. And we're going to hear lots of, well, we won't hear some of them, because one of my council reps isn't even here tonight, and some other time I'll come down here and talk about the dig-through I did on every single agenda of board and commission and city council meeting to show that this body in the last two years has missed more meetings in aggregate than the previous 20 years. So I'm sorry that Ward 1 Lisa Dish isn't here. So, because she was all geared up last week to make excuses about how great this is going to be. But it's not going to be good. It's going to be tragic, and it's going to put one of the final nails in the coffin of our climate action plan. So don't be afraid to say no. And if you're concerned about emissions, I suggest you say yes to a call for ceasefire, because all I see when I look at the drone footage from Gaza are AC units that have been spilling their guts up into the ozone when they're bombed with American bombs.
Mr. Hayner.
So if you care about the climate, you'll say yes to a ceasefire.
Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak at this public meeting, this public hearing? Seeing no one, is there anyone on, Mr. Garber, my apologies?
That's okay. You've heard me speak 16 times on this project. I don't blame you for wanting not to hear me again, and not that I'm implying that you were. I know you've been very good about hearing my comments over the years on the village. I'm not saying tonight to say no to this project. I'm saying delay it, one council meeting, have the Robertson Brothers team sit down with OSI and try to find a solution, because this is really, putting new fossil fuel infrastructure in place in 2024, to me, makes no sense from a climate science point of view. And I like the Robertson Brothers team, and they will meet with you. They've met with me and with other members of the community. They're good people, and they have their reasons, frankly, for going with gas. You know, they're a regional developer. They're not Toll Brothers. Any project this big carries risks, even in a housing market as hot as Ann Arbor's. From their point of view, why add risk by going all-electric? They see a supply chain risk, an upfront cost risk, a contractor risk, because many subs dislike unfamiliar systems and will overquote the work, a tenant utility cost risk, overblown, but there's something there, and a DTE connection risk, which is very real. It's just so much simpler to go with gas. Yet this kind of thinking is keeping our city, our country, and our entire world from making progress on climate. There are developers like the Simon Group that's behind the Briarwood project that you approved last month. They have accepted or mitigated the additional economic risk of going electric. That's now their normal way of building. Robertson Brothers needs to be there now. This project is too big and too important to let it move forward with gas. We must push them on this. I appreciated Mr. Gurk's comments, mentioning the 164 for sale units that will be all-electric with heat pumps, but I'm not as terrible as he is about giving Robertson Brothers credit for that. In fact, the public is paying for those heat pumps and for the solar streetlights and the solar clubhouse through the brownfield plan, the non-environmental portion, $2.9 million worth, including carrying costs. That's 2.9 million, 2.9 million not going to city, county, schools, and library. I think this sets a very bad precedent. I think this sets a very bad precedent, because we shouldn't be paying developers to do things they should be doing already, and that many are. We should have waited for a different developer willing to meet our community standards. And it's possible, although it's the 11th hour, that Robertson Brothers could end up being that developer, and I think you deserve to give them a chance and the public.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Alex Lo, do you have a comment?
Hi, this is Alex Lo again. Yeah, I'll keep my comments short, but I've said before, I'm not a huge fan of this plan, but I think it might be about the best we're going to get. I would like to see more density, taller buildings, et cetera. And I would like to see city council putting in ordinances and changes to the development code that incentivize that. Those are more efficient uses of the land, those are more energy-efficient, et cetera. I don't like that this isn't all-electric, but I think that the alternative is worse. Thank you.
Luis Vasquez, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Luis Vasquez, from Upper Lower Town. I agree with many of the speakers about the need for more electrification of all developments going forward in Ann Arbor. And, you know, would just like to point out that currently, most of the electricity generated by DTE, in particular, comes from fossil fuels as well. So, I mean, these are incredible trade-offs that we're dealing with. But once again, I see the need for more housing of all kinds in Ann Arbor. We need, we need the development of more housing of all kinds, and I think that takes precedence in this case, in this particular case. And I'd like to also just say I'm really disgusted with what Jeff Hayner just had to say. I think that's improper grandstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't have any other callers online for this hearing.
See no one? This public hearing, this public hearing is closed. We have before us the work session meeting minutes of December 1 and the regular session meeting minutes of December 4. May I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes, moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Guzzi Edwin. Discussion of the minutes. All in favor? Opposed? Minutes are approved. B1, an ordinance to add Chapter 55 leaf blowers to Title VI of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion, please, of B1. Councilmember Cornell.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to speak tonight on any of the number of the topics that we've heard about. I wanted to address feedback that we received regarding why is the rollout so long and why isn't the period shorter? And we really wanted to allow time, addressing the small business owner that was here, I don't know if the gentleman's still here, but we gave a lot of careful consideration to making sure that this did not cause an economic hardship, especially to small businesses. So that was the trade-off in terms of allowing their usage longer, but doing so with mindfulness around small business owners in the city. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Guzzi Edwin.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to keep my comments brief as well, but I wanted to speak to, you know, I do believe that this ordinance is going to make our community healthier, cleaner, it's more in line with our values. I also do hear the very real concerns about financial burden. That's why a resolution, I put a resolution forth that was unanimously passed by council, titled Resolution to Launch Educational and Engagement Initiatives in Support of Transition to All-Electric Leaf Maintenance. And essentially, it includes that there's going to be both an educational campaign that we'll launch next year and a bulk-buy program from our Office of Sustainability and Innovations, where they will purchase all-electric lawn equipment, including leaf blowers. And I encourage, you know, the gentleman who spoke previously, who owns a business, to look out for that and participate in it, because it will hopefully allow residents and small businesses to purchase this equipment at a cheaper rate. So thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. B2, an ordinance to amend the zoning map, being part of Section 5.10.2 of Chapter 55, Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, zoning of 5.9 acres from TWP Township District to R4A Multifamily Dwelling District, 2520 Pontiac Trail and 2540 Pontiac Trail, moved by. Councilmember Song, seconded by Councilmember Adina. Discussion, please, of B2.
So we've heard some comments and questions around, and requests that we might postpone this, rezoning, to work further with the developer, and I wondered if, I mean, I did want to point out, I know some of the speakers know this, that none of our, we are not allowed by building code to require all-electric. That's something that's, that's not permitted, regardless of the zoning category, but I thought staff might be able to provide a little bit of background on this for those who are listening in terms of that question.
Mr. Kowalski should be available to answer questions.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Yes, I understand the question regarding, it was regarding the electrification of the project? Correct?
Yes, correct. Yeah, that's.
Okay, yes. Well, they did so, as I think council was aware, and we did point out during the earlier discussions, that the, there is a large component of the rental, I'm sorry, not of the rental, the for-sale units that were available on the previous site plan that was approved, those are all-electric. Those will be all-electric. The new apartment buildings, as was indicated again, are not. They did reach out to our office, the OSI office, during the first phase as well as the second phase. I can't speak to specifically why they did not agree to electrify the second phase, but I know that they did have feelings regarding the, because the second phase, what would be approved on the site plan tonight are the rental apartments. I think there is some feeling that there was a cost implication behind that. I know that the developer is available, they are virtual tonight, that you could call them up if you do want additional information regarding exactly why they were able to pursue the electrification.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Briggs, you're still to the floor.
I guess that would be helpful to hear from the developer if they're willing to speak to that question.
Mr. LaFren is available, I believe, as well as some of his crew.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
From the Robertson Homes. Good evening. So the question, we have agreed to force, for the for-sale units to be all-electric. You know, this has been a very well-litigated project, times with Mr. Garber and Mr. Fine. And again, we have agreed to the 164 townhomes as all-electric. We've actually been part of their group discussions and I think have helped kind of, you know, give them our perspective from a developer standpoint. It is cost implications, particularly with this last phase here, which are smaller units. And, you know, we've provided data. I know they argue some of the, some of those numbers, but even they agree that it is more expensive for all-electric, in particular with the, this is our proposal to move forward with gas for just the cooking. You know, we have agreed also to pre-plummet, to have a switch to all, that's everything for all of the apartment units. That is something we've talked to them about as well. So I'm happy to go over some of the details of the project. I think you've all, you've all know very well, you have as well, so thank you.
Thanks. You were cutting out a little bit in that. I just want to make sure that I understood that it's, the project is going to be, did you say it's going to be sized for a future transition to all-electric power? Is that, is that what you're saying?
It is, yes. We will pre-plumb all of the units for future connection to all-electric.
Thanks.
Further discussion? I'm sorry. Councilmember Ayer, Van Eckman.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute to note the great benefit that we will get from this rezoning to add 120 additional units to this project overall, bringing the total to 604, I believe, on the total site. We have a housing crisis. We need to build as much housing as we can, as quickly as we can in this city. We are tens of thousands of housing units short, and we need to make sure that we do not let the perfect be the enemy of the good here. We, in addition, I want to note that, as a council, we are addressing the issue of natural gas in our community from a much more holistic standpoint. We have recently begun negotiations on a new heating franchise for the city. For those who are not familiar with what that means, right now, our heating franchise is a gas franchise with DTE. It is up in 2027, and we have begun negotiations to transition, to transition to, from, from a gas franchise with DTE to a geothermal franchise with an entity to be determined, potentially DTE, potentially another one. The point is that we need to phase out natural gas in our community, and we need to do it from a community-wide standpoint, and we will do that, and it will be a long and careful transition, but that work is actively being done. And so I don't want to leave people with the impression that that is not happening, that is. And with that said, I am enthusiastically supporting this tonight.
Councilwoman Rackman.
Yeah, I was just hoping that the developer could speak a little bit more to the cost implications of making this particular portion all-electric.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And I don't have the exact costs in front of me, and of course, those change over time. I think it'd be anywhere from, you know, 30 to 60 to potentially even, obviously, fuel changes up to $100 a month. And that's, that's something that we've, you know, shared with the group before as well. So it is, when we're talking about, you know, people that are, you know, on somewhat of a fixed income, that certainly is important to us, and that's why we provided that information. And again, we've met with, discussed that in detail as well.
Councilwoman Rackman.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Briggs.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate the feedback. You know, we did, you know, ask some questions around the financing of this. I think it's important to end with the, with the acknowledgement that regardless of weather, I would like this to be all-electric, which I would. That is not something that we have the power to require. And so we work with, with developers to bring forward projects, and this project has come a significant way. If you are interested more to learn about this, you can see all the sustainability elements that are in the staff report online. However, we just, we don't, this is a rezoning, and neither of the zoning categories actually require all-electric. So I'm glad to see that we've made a significant progress. This is something that is, I think, an important project for, for our city, but we do have to use the tools we have. And for folks who have suggested that we need to incentivize this more, I fully agree. That's why I've supported and co-sponsored some resolutions to that effect, but it's going to take us some time to get there.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's approved. DB1, Resolution to Approve the Village of Ann Arbor Site Plan at 1710 Duvarn Road, moved by. Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Adina. Discussion, please, of DB1. All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. C1, Ordinance to amend Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, rezoning of 53 parcels in the Plymouth Road area to TC1 Transit Corridor District, city-initiated rezoning, moved by. Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Song. Discussion, please, of C1. Councilmember Watson.
I'll be delivering some comments from Lisa Dish, Planning Commission liaison, but I wholeheartedly concur. So this ordinance would amend Chapter 55 of the UDC to rezone 53 parcels in the Plymouth Road area to TC1 or Transit Corridor. This district was added to the UDC in July 2021 to promote mixed use, that is, commercial and residential development along corridors that are well-served by transit and could accommodate more frequent transit service if population densities warranted. One idea behind transit zoning is that housing created on the periphery of Ann Arbor will command lower rents than downtown residential properties do. Another is that residential development and transit can each support the growth of the other, helping to reduce vehicle miles traveled by letting residents live closer to where they work. One way to think about transit corridor zoning is that it is designed to stimulate developers to repurpose our parking lots from storing cars to housing people, which is something that can be done without demolishing what's already there. To date, 258 parcels covering about 400 acres have been rezoned to TC1. The proposed rezoning would add 53 more unique parcels and 107 unique addresses from 50 individual lots and three condominiums. When it came to planning commission, it contained 45 parcels of land over 127 acres. In response to a request by property owners, planning commission added eight additional parcels located in the Plymouth East subarea, adjacent to the area originally proposed for rezoning. Four of these extend the boundary northward and four extend the boundary southward, though there may be an amendment coming on that. During the planning commission discussion, commissioners heard concerns regarding the effect of TC1 rezoning on existing businesses. There are a number of independently-owned businesses along Plymouth, especially at Murphin, Nixon, and Green, whose owners fear that they would not be able to afford the rent if rezoning spurs redevelopment. This is a legitimate concern, but it is worth noting that some of these properties, where these independent businesses are thriving, are currently zoned C3, which already allows mixed-use buildings up to heights of 55 feet. Development along these corridors is slow and will most likely continue to be even after rezoning. Two last points of note: This rezoning will affect a handful of parcels that currently have deed restrictions attached to them and one PUD. Council should know that all the parcels in the corridor are eligible for rezoning regardless of the deed restrictions or they're being zoned PUD. Regarding the first of these, staff explained that zoning is a regulatory power of the city. Deed restrictions are private agreements that individuals may enter into. Deed restrictions are private agreements that individuals may enter into, but that do not take precedence over city zoning. Put simply, the city is not obligated to cede its zoning authority in deference to agreements between private individuals. It's possible that it will be more difficult to redevelop the deed-restricted properties within the terms of TC1, but that's not a problem that the city needs to address. Regarding the second, a PUD zoning district and its supplemental regulations remain in effect until council changes the PUD zoning district. We can rezone the PUD to TC1.
Councilmember?
Yeah. Finishing it up.
You can cycle back. Further discussion of the main motion? Councilmember Briggs.
I didn't, Councilmember Watson, to finish his thoughts, I'd be happy to defer to this, but I did, there is one amendment that we need to, I need to introduce. We received a communication around this during the planning commission discussion. Unfortunately, planning commission wanted to expand the number of properties impacted by the TC1 zoning, which is good. Unfortunately, those parcels did not receive appropriate noticing, and so we need to remove those from the consideration tonight. So I'd like to put forward a motion to make an amendment. Should I read it and then?
Read it, it's fine.
Okay. So I move to amend the ordinance and map to remove the eight parcels that were not included in the original staff recommendation to planning commission. In the ordinance, those parcels are identified as parcels 46 through 53.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Is that friendly? Friendly to the body. Further discussion, the main motion is amended. Thank you. Councilmember Watson.
Just picking up on the, on the PUD question, CM Dish tells me that she will put the question of whether we want to keep those supplemental regulations in place to staff before a second reading. But I also want to speak a little bit to the coffee, to the feedback I've heard from the community. I've heard it at coffee hours. I've, we also had an October infestation at the Traverwood Ranch Library. But, you know, there's some trepidation in the community as this change goes forward, but this category has been vetted by staff and is intended to increase housing access and choice, affordability and options along transit corridors. And I've seen quite personally that mixed use and infill has worked along this corridor. In fact, the coffee shop where I host my coffee hours is a mixed-use development with two floors of residential on top of a number of commercial uses. The other main infill that we've seen in this corridor is in front of Way 1 Market, where parking lot has successfully been turned into two-story buildings with businesses on the bottom and top floors. To me, TC1 isn't, isn't about, or TC1 is about influencing what comes next. We don't want strip mall development to be replaced with more strip mall development. Our community can support more walkable, transit-oriented development, and Plymouth, the Plymouth corridor is a great example, and TC1 will help move this, this corridor forward.
Councilmember Song.
So I'm really glad Councilmember Watson mentions the Plymouth Road Mall area as an infill project. So just to bring you, bring you back in time, that was first proposed in 2006, broke ground in 2012, and what we've seen is that that area, which supports a number of minority-owned businesses, including first-generation minority-owned businesses, Ann Arborites, who actually grew up here and are dedicating their time to have those businesses, have been successful. So I think, you know, when that project was first proposed, there was a lot of fear that it would take away from, you know, the little, that little area where Starbucks is and a couple other businesses would take away from the mall that's been there longer. And that hasn't been the case. If you speak to Songbird Cafe, Rapport, Carpenter Brothers, you'll hear that traffic, the support for those businesses has actually increased because it's walkable, it's more walkable to go to more businesses. So I'm really excited to see that success be repeated along that corridor so that folks can walk, bike, and frequent local businesses. So thank you, Councilmember Watson, for having that discussion with residents and pointing to how that's successful. Let's try to see if we can make it the entire stretch.
Further discussion? For my part, I'm very excited about moving this, moving this zoning designation forward. The TC1 district is designed to, to increase density and walkability on transit corridors, which is exactly, you know, where it ought, where it ought to be and where it ought to thrive. The TC1 district provides for increased density on transit corridors, enabling residents in those more built-out areas to get in and out of town without a car. It enables them, these new residents, to live in connection with places to work and to, and to enjoy, and, and to, of course, with the, the multiple opportunities for green space throughout the, throughout the balance of the city. This is an exciting prospect for another stretch of our city to be benefited by TC1, and I'm excited that it's moving forward. Further discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
I just wanted to chime in with the idea that these corridors are kind of a long game. It's about, you know, it's as much about preventing development that we don't want to see as it is about enabling development we do want to see. And I think, you know, personally, it's a little bit hard to see things progress so slowly because you think you make this change and something's going to happen really quickly. So I did want to point out, though, the first area that was designated as a transit corridor has its first, I believe, public meeting coming up on January 9th, and this is for Eisenhower State. And just to make a plug for that meeting, you can find it online, but it's the corner of Eisenhower and State. The meeting is Tuesday, January 9th, public input meeting from 6:00 to 7:30 at the 777 Building, so.
Further discussion? Councilmember Song.
And then I also forgot to add that, we also have the university's plans. So if we look at Campus 2050 and the proposals for Plymouth Road Corridor, there's three, three proposals, three potential proposals. I'm really advocating for C, where there'll be a conference hotel center across from Plymouth Road Mall. So if we talk about density and we talk about our partnership with the university, I really appreciate how we have this open conversation, ongoing conversation on what our city can look like along these very busy transportation corridors that supports university staff, medical staff, faculty, students. And if a conference center hotel can bring some economic livelihood along that corridor too, and also, you know, provide more constant, you know, business support for our small businesses there, then I'm all for it. So if we're all working hand in hand, that'll be great. Thanks.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? With nine, 10 council members present, all voting in the affirmative, thus satisfying the, thus, well, I'll just note it, 10 council members present, all voting in the affirmative. C2, an ordinance to amend Sections 5.15, 5.16, and 5.37 of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code Title V, the Code of the City of Ann Arbor Banquet Hall, Personal Services and Veterinary Uses. Move by. Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion, please, of C2. Councilmember Briggs.
Yes, so Councilmember Dish, who is the liaison to planning commission, always provides very quick and thorough updates around every planning commission thing. She's out of the country right now, but regardless, she has sent her information to make sure that everybody understands what this change is. So I want to provide that information for those in the public. It's important to know that this, although this is a technical denial, there were too few members present due to recusals or absences, but all of the members recommended approval, so, and supported the changes. Essentially, this ordinance change were triggered by a petitioner's request to add event space as a permitted use in the office district. Consideration of this request led planning staff to a broader discussion of whether event space was the best word for what the petitioner was asking for, and whether it was widely known that the temporary assemblies or gatherings are currently allowed in mixed-use districts, wherever that is, wherever there is a restaurant, and how best zoning to facilitate adaptive reuse of office buildings. So consequently, there are several changes here, the most significant of which adds banquet hall to the UDC, defines it, permits banquet halls in all mixed-use districts, whether there is a restaurant or not, and permits banquet halls and, and host of other uses in the office district to facilitate adaptive reuse of office space. The staff report notes that the office has been steadily evolving into a complete mixed-use district. These zoning changes will help the UDC keep up with that evolution. Staff also proposes additional amendments to office district to better align its permitted uses with those of mixed-use districts generally. These include allowing all types of personal services in the office district, not only beauty salons consistent with other mixed-use districts. It also allows fraternity sororities, student cooperative housing, club headquarters, community center, religious assembly, private K-12 schools, and indoor recreation as a primary rather than special exception use in the office district. And it separates veterinary offices from veterinary kennels and animal boarding, so as to allow veterinary offices as primary uses in the mixed-use districts. Kennels and animal boarding remain as currently permitted, which is a special exception use in some districts and primary uses in others. It also allows trade and industrial schools as primary uses in the office district.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. C3, an ordinance to amend Section 5.16 of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Move by. Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion, please, of C3. Councilmember Ackman.
I am thrilled to see this come to us because it's something I've been asking about for a while. It's, it's an amendment to the UDC, which was developed in response to council's direction to staff to develop a solar access ordinance. The very fancy-sounding personal scale SES basically means solar panels. And so right now, residents are not allowed to have solar panels in their front yard. And in fact, as I think a previous caller stated, we're more restrictive about solar panels in front yards than we are about accessory structures in general. So the changes being put forth with this will allow for solar panels in front yards up to 10 feet from the lot line. It will also allow unlimited coverage in the rear setback area for solar panels. I think we can all appreciate the urgency and the significance of this change, especially if we think back to the Energy Options Report that we received a couple of months ago. This report identified a gap between the amount of clean energy that can be generated in Ann Arbor and the amount of energy that the city and its residents consume. And I believe I just saw a news report today saying that we have a record amount of solar being used in the city. So clearly, there is a demand for this. There are people for which, you know, I'm running out of roof space personally, so this opens up more options for people to generate power on their own property. So I'm very excited to support this and move it forward tonight.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. DB1, resolution to approve the Village of Ann Arbor. No, we've already done that. C2, C4. DC, thank you very much. DC1, resolution to recommend approval of issuance of a downtown development liquor license to the Michigan Theater Foundation, Inc. Move by. Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion, please, of DC1. Councilmember Ackman.
Very excited to bring this. I mean, it's pretty minor, but Michigan Theater is a very beloved organization in our community. I'm lucky enough to serve as one of the council liaisons to that board. They have had a club liquor license, which means that people who are Michigan Theater members can purchase alcohol, but others can't. So this is changing the liquor license to one in which all guests of all events and movies at the theater can buy alcohol as they please. So that's it. It's pretty straightforward.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. DS1, resolution to approve Andre Anderson as the City of Ann Arbor Police Chief. Move by. Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Councilmember Song. Discussion, please, of DS1. Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so I'd like to take this moment to extend my heartfelt thanks to our dedicated city staff, the Independent Community Police Oversight Commission, Administrator DeHoney, and Baker Tilly, who have worked tirelessly in this search process. Your commitment and diligence have been instrumental in guiding us through this important transition. I also want to express my appreciation to interim chief Patrick McGuire and our entire police department. Your participation in this process, your patience, and your unwavering commitment to our community during these times of change have been admirable. Thank you to our former, to former interim chief Amy Metzer for her years of service, her work with ICPOC, and for supporting the Driving Equality Ordinance. Lastly, to the candidates for the police chief position, thank you for your willingness to serve and your vision for the future of policing in the City of Ann Arbor. Looking ahead, I am excited and optimistic about working closely with our new police chief to further Ann Arbor's vision of resident-led, community policing, and justice-centered policing, ensuring a safe, inclusive, and equitable community for all.
Further discussion? I'd like to echo those sentiments of thanks to everyone on staff who has participated in the search. Goes from, you know, the most, the most, most recent hire who provided feedback and to all the way up to Mr. DeHoney. What we know is that we are just so fortunate to have a staff, and in this case, a police department, that is focused on doing their job with professionalism and diligence, and who are keen constantly to provide outstanding service to all members of the Ann Arbor community and indeed, all persons who are so fortunate as to wander their, wander their way into, into our jurisdiction. I am myself, I would also like to echo Councilmember Harrison's thanks to the most recently departed leaders of our institution, former interim chief Metzer and now presently interim chief McGuire. It is a difficult job serving as police chief, as it is being a new recruit as well. I don't want to diminish anyone's difficulty in the police department. It is a difficult and trying job, but it is one that is, is necessary and one upon which, which we, we rely with, with deep gratitude. With respect to Chief Anderson, I am incredibly excited about his joining us here in Ann Arbor. I think that his, his poise and, and vision and humanity was on full display, certainly here at the, in council chambers when he spoke to us, and has been reported up and down the line with all members of the public and staff with whom he has, has spoken. I'm looking forward to his joining us when, when the time is ripe, and I am confident that the relationship will prove, you know, fruitful and, and deeply positive. Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. Ms. Cord, do we have a closed session today?
Yes, we do, Mayor. I would like to request a closed session under MCL 15.268, Section 8H, to discuss two privileged and confidential memos provided to council, one on December 14, 2023, and the other on December 15, 2023. Thank you.
May I have a motion? Please do go into closed session on that basis. Move by. Councilmember Song, seconded by Councilmember Gazi Edwin. Discussion? Roll call, please, starting with Councilmember Harrison.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Song?
Yes.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Yes.
Mary Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Oier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish, absent. Motion carries.
We're in closed session.
May I have a motion please to go back into open session? Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Song. Discussion, in favor, opposed. We are back in open session. We have before us the Clerk's Report of Communications, Petitions and Referrals. May I have a motion please to approve the Clerk's Report? Moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion of the Clerk's Report. Councilmember Song.
So normally I wouldn't actually discuss something like this, but if I can just recognize Jessica Leto and her resignation from the DDA. It's so difficult to ask for normal folks to volunteer in our commissions, and this is a lot of work at the DDA, so I just wanted to thank her for her time served, and I look forward to seeing who can fill her spot on that board.
Further discussion? In favor, opposed, is approved. We have the pleasure of communications today from our city attorney.
No, thank you, ma'am.
We now return to public comment overflow time. Public comment, of course, is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council in the community about matters of municipal interest, to speak at public comment general time. One needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, designated by the clock in front of you or by our clerk if you are online. In all instances, please pay close attention to the time, and when your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our next speaker in line today is Zainab Wazir.
My name is Zainab Wazir, and I'm a journalist. I'm here today to bear witness to many of the lies and propaganda that have been taking place just the last time I covered this event. Including today, we heard some more propaganda and lies, and I'm here to debunk them. I find that as my job as a journalist, I have to speak the truth and hold people accountable, even if it's people who are in the government. Councilwoman Briggs brought up the beheaded babies. There is no evidence for these beheaded babies unless you count Ben Shapiro's AI image. What there is evidence for is many decapitated Palestinian babies, over 18,000 people killed. And Congresswoman Debbie Dingell also brought this up on an interview where she said that the crowd here widely booed that statement, and rightfully so, because it was a lie. We know that that propaganda point was recanted by the White House, it was debunked by Israeli media, and it was recanted by Sarah Sidner, the CNN journalist, on her Twitter account where she apologized profusely. So why are we repeating these lies? This is a question we need to ask ourselves. Another point that was brought up was a mass rape, also by Congresswoman Debbie Dingell, as a tool of war. This is a point that was brought up earlier today as well, and these kind of lies feed the misinformation that leads to people acting wrongfully. The details of October 7th are unclear, as a journalist who's been reporting on this not just from October 7th, but widely before that. I've studied this in much detail, reported on this. It's very unclear what happened that day. In fact, Apache helicopters by the Israeli regime were unleashed, and they have themselves come forward and said over half of the civilians that were killed that day were by Israel themselves. The head of the Sexual Assault Center in Alberta, Samantha Pearson, was recently fired for her stance after she wrote a letter that these claims were unverified. Why was she fired? Did anyone ask that question? The director of a sexual assault center was fired. We must ask these questions as people of truth and consciousness. I think... Is my time over?
It is, ma'am. Thank you.
I guess the ending would be just...
South Military aid to Israel.
If we can just look into our consciousness and be people of truth, not repeat lies, that is very important. It doesn't matter where we're from, what background we have. I know I'm over my time, but I have to bear witness.
Thank you.
We can't.
Thank you.
No matter what background, what we have, where we're from, all of us here, we need to be a society of truth. If we're not a society of truth, who are we?
Ma'am, a moment of overflow is, of course, all right, but you've extended. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Anderson.
My name is Jessica. My partner Amir is here with me. He was born and raised in the Palestinian city of Nazareth, and as he will share shortly, we've had to cancel our Christmas celebration this year following the call of Palestinian church leadership. Without a ceasefire in place, this is a season of unrelenting grief for our family. This morning, I received an update from a dear friend whose entire family is in Gaza. While watching Al Jazeera, he said, "I saw my neighbor carrying a dead body. I tried to reach him by phone, but to no avail. My neighborhood has been heavily bombarded all day. His wife, also a friend of ours, has lost 18 family members." Recently, the heads of CARE USA, Mercy Corps, the Norwegian Refugee Council, Save the Children U.S., and other organizations wrote these words in The New York Times. "We are no strangers to human suffering, to conflict, to natural disasters, to some of the world's largest and gravest catastrophes." They mentioned working in Sudan, Ukraine, Turkey, Syria, and more before saying, "We have seen nothing like the siege of Gaza." Then they issued a prescription for an immediate and complete ceasefire and an end to the siege. Some of you said earlier you were looking for the right words. These are the right words. I know that it feels like it takes time, but our brothers and sisters in Gaza do not have more time. The World Health Organization has issued a dire warning: More people will die from disease than bombing in Gaza without an immediate ceasefire and the rapid restoration of the health system. So I thank the councilmembers here, Edwin, Briggs, and Song, for working on a resolution, and I ask you to commit to finding the words as urgently as you would if it was your family members who are starving right now. We are a city known for its healthcare system. People come here to save lives and to receive life-saving care. It is impossible for a city like Ann Arbor to ignore the scenes from Gaza's hospitals and the cries from Gaza's health workers and patients. We need local representation of the demand for ceasefire, especially in light of the slowness of many of our state and national leadership, to represent the overwhelming will of the people. Calling for a ceasefire is consistent with our city's values. It offers much-needed hope and support to members of this community like my family who are being directly impacted for 72 days nonstop, and it is a crucial first step toward addressing multiple forms of racism and hate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gretchen Kepel Alex. Our next speaker is Mujad Idris.
I'm a political scientist, a ward to resident, and the parent of an Ann Arbor Public School child. I'm Palestinian, and I'm your neighbor. I thank councilmembers Ghazi, Edwin, Briggs, and Song for their efforts to bring forward a ceasefire resolution. The resolution had problems, but they're fixable. I think a ceasefire is urgent, so I urge you to persist. Even the most indirect upward pressure that this body can apply is of value. Anyone who wants a just solution for Palestinians and Israelis must ask for a ceasefire so that negotiations can resume. Calling for a ceasefire doesn't mean that you don't have compassion for Ann Arbor's ideologically diverse Jewish residents. They and everyone else should feel safe here in schools and at places of worship. The failure to speak for a ceasefire contributes to a public climate where it's open season on Palestinians and where further dehumanized. The question is not empathy or a personal connection to this. It's letting your voters know where you stand on a ceasefire. We need to know. The atrocities in Gaza are well documented, systematic, and severe by every metric. Over the last 71 days, 25,000 children have been orphaned. To put this into perspective, Ann Arbor Public Schools have just over 17,000 students. So imagine if every child in our schools had a parent killed, and every child in IPSI's public schools and in Dexter's public schools, and then they're still being bombarded. 50,000 people have been injured. That's the combined number of residents of any two Ann Arbor wards. This isn't something far away, as you know it is here. In two months, we've witnessed an avalanche of civil rights violations at the University of Michigan, for instance, each met with the equivalent of an administrative shrug. Racist slurs and threats against Arab students, physical intimidation, infringements on academic freedom, disinformation about calls for Palestinian freedom, and attempts to excuse actual genocidal rhetoric and actions. Meanwhile, even minor incidents that don't involve Palestinians, Arabs, our Black and Brown allies, and anti-Zionist Jewish brothers and sisters receive immediate and clear responses. That's why it's a civil rights question. The incidents we have are almost certainly underreported. Our communities have lost faith in these institutions, and they were already less likely to report. This is bad. This is why I'm asking you to call for a ceasefire. Local issues from curricula to school safety need work across groups. That can only happen after a ceasefire, when our community can stop watching our people being carpet bombed. I'm putting a question before all of you, and it's not rhetorical. Is there anything that the Israeli forces could do that would cause you to call for a ceasefire, either as a city council or publicly as individuals who are also elected representatives? If the answer is no, we need to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Reema Mohamed. Our next speaker is Reema Mohammed.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me the opportunity to address you as my colleagues here tonight. I want to first thank council members Ghazi, Edwin, Briggs, and Song for all your hard work in sponsoring the anti-hate and end-to-conflict-in-Gaza-and-Israel resolution that was unfortunately rescinded from the agenda tonight. I do appreciate the ongoing communication with me through this unfortunate situation in Gaza. As you know, I came to speak to you early on in October, after the initial events of October 7th. And I spoke to you as a Palestinian Muslim-American, as an elected official. I shared with you my feelings of hurt, of pain, of being alone, and as a person and as a colleague. I shared with you the realities of what is happening now that are impacting my community, which includes many Muslims and Arabs, especially Palestinians in Ann Arbor. I shared with you that people from my community are scared. I shared with you that there have been ongoing safety concerns, fear of speaking, generational trauma, and mental health, and the feeling of not being supported by our elected officials, and that includes city council. Unfortunately, as weeks, months have passed, I hear silence. Until recently, I had hope. We are all elected to represent the entire community: Arabs, Muslims, Palestinians, Jews. We are all hurting. I have heard from many, from my community, that their elected officials, including city council, are disconnected from the Muslim and Arab community here. It is crucial to reach out to all your constituents and hear their struggles, their experiences, their concerns. I'm only one community member here, and I do appreciate the relationships I have with each one of you, but it's important to hear the others in the community. I do also hear that there is a concern the resolution will divide the community. Well, the community is divided, and it's still divided. And yes, there is extremes between, you know, within the communities, but it is important that we do, we do, sorry, I know my time is almost up, but it is very important that we do try to come together, and I do believe that a ceasefire resolution will try to unite the community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karthik Nara Pathi.
I'm still hearing from Zoom members online that they can't hear.
Thank you. We're working it.
I think talk to all you school board members, not just one.
We should be back on Zoom now. Thank you for the information. Our next speaker is Karthik Nara Pathi. Thank you. Did you say he's on Zoom? Thank you. Our next speaker is Yaman Sadeh.
Yaman Sadeh. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Dr. Yaman Sadeh. I was born in Ann Arbor. I grew up in Ann Arbor Hills off of Pontiac Trail. Years before MLive, I was a paper boy for the Ann Arbor News. I went to Ann Arbor Open Middle School. I played varsity football at Huron High. I worked my way through college as a waiter at Big Boy on Plymouth Road. After a long road, I'm very fortunate today to serve my community as a neurosurgeon at U of M Hospital. There's been a lot of hesitation by the city council of my hometown to pass a resolution condemning the atrocities currently being committed in Gaza, where for the past 72 days, continuing to today, a child is being killed every 10 minutes, where 1 million children are being malnourished and slowly starved to death, where WHO is describing a graveyard for children. One of the many reasons, or one of the reasons being cited for why we have not passed a ceasefire resolution yet is that this is not a local issue, and I'm here today to tell you why this is a very local issue. My father moved to Ann Arbor in the 1980s to earn his PhD. After my parents' divorce, he moved back to Gaza in the 1990s, at a time when you can drive from Gaza to Jerusalem. My dad lives in Gaza now, along with three of my sisters, and they, along with 2 million other civilians, have lost their homes and their refugees, trapped under a cruel bombardment and starved of water and basic necessities. We fear for their lives every minute of every day, and we feel completely powerless to help them or increase their chances of survival. And we know that our fellow citizens' silence in the face of these crimes is just as deadly as the bombs being dropped on houses all around them every day. Ann Arbor is consistently ranked amongst the top cities in the country. It's viewed as a thought leader, a place of principle, a leader in ethical government, and a concern for the world at large. City council must embrace moral clarity and support and pass a ceasefire resolution when it comes back on the agenda. Ann Arbor should not ignore what is happening to its own in Gaza. Gaza is a local issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mohammed Saifuddin.
I'm Mohammed Saifuddin. I'm in Ward 3. I heard something at the Ypsilanti. I hope I get it all together. I'm a nurse, I'm a case manager for children with special needs. I've been a nurse for 47 years, and I just, six grandchildren, and I'm just very soft, so excuse me. I heard the Ypsilanti City Council, one of the members from Ann Arbor spoke there, and he said that in the first time in his life, he has seen genocide livestreamed, and that has just resonated with me. I'm almost 67 years old, lived through certain things, but this is really something very incredible. Then the reality of this Holocaust, because by definition, this is a Holocaust. It's not the Holocaust, but it is a Holocaust. It's being witnessed daily around the world. I mean, my LinkedIn, I just was looking at it, and I just saw an advertisement in Hebrew for developments in Gaza by the beach, just showing. So it's just coming. It's like we're overwhelmed. It doesn't stop. It's 24 hours. We can't say that Palestinians, whether Christians or Jews, they haven't died, they've been killed. They've been murdered. So I think it's a disservice to say, because when people die, it's often from disease or natural disasters. We think of that as death, but this is murder. This is just brutality. And this is a, this collective punishment on the scale magnitude with the full scale, with the full support of our government, our war crimes, this is not something I feel is really up for debate. If you need some insight into this depravity, and I'm not, I know, we have Jewish neighbors here, and I'm not, I know they're suffering. So I'm talking about the people carrying out this, these things, not the people living through it on either side. The recent statement, I read this today by the mayor of Jerusalem, sums it up. He said that Hamas are not human beings, they're not human animals, they're not subhuman. That's how, they're not subhuman, that's how they should be treated. So they're like dirt. I don't know Hamas, I'm not speaking for them. But if you, if you spread that out to the entire population, then what can you do? I'm from New York City. You see a cockroach, you step on it. Houses are full of cockroaches, you don't think about stepping on them. So when you make something into a cockroach, what are you going to do? You're going to kill it. Shooting, shooting your own people, waving a white flag is subhuman. Leaving newborns to die in bassinets and to find them being eaten by dogs and bugs is subhuman. I work with children. When my clients die, whatever, we cry at our job for them. Dropping 2,000 bomb, now quaintly called dumb bombs, directly on homes is subhuman. Our military didn't do this. So I'll just, I have to get through this, I'm sorry, but, you know, Ann Arbor, and I just want to say this, one thing I've said, I frequently say, in adversity, there's winners. And today in Reuters, the title was Wars Raise Profit Outlook for the U.S. Defense Industry in 2024. This has also helped our federal government, so please...
Thank you.
Just look in your hearts and do the right thing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Lauer.
My name is David Lauer. I spoke to a number of community members near and far to compile this collaborative statement. I sat here for some time after the last council meeting, and what came to mind was the imperative for actionable items to be introduced to the Ann Arbor public, and what some of those items or services might look like. We can all sit here ad nauseam, calling for what we believe is best for our people, or we can try to bridge the gap between, and I hate to say this, our sides. We're all citizens of the world, and we all fundamentally deserve the same basic human rights. In Denmark, public libraries offer the option to borrow a person, okay, instead of a book, and to listen to their life stories in hope of combating prejudice. Each person has a title such as unemployed, refugee, bipolar, Holocaust survivor, homeless, you get the idea. By listening to their stories, you realize how much we shouldn't judge a book by their cover. This innovative project is active in 85-plus countries. It's called the Human Library. In such a place as Ann Arbor, a microcosm of intellectuals and a melting pot of people from all around the world, okay, what better place to start an initiative that promotes discourse and creates a safe space for people of different walks of life to come together and, most importantly, listen to one another? Okay? When Ann Arbor starts an initiative, the rest of the world watches to see how successful we are and then follows suit. Okay? We set the tone for so many social, environmental, and physical policies that promote positive change during trying times. We are all feeling an immense amount of pain and making emotionally charged statements of how we feel and what our morals and beliefs are. Be careful that the words you share and understand yourself might be misconstrued as an attack of spreading hatred or anger or anything, fill in the gap there, towards another religion, group of people, or geographic location. We're all grieving, whether you live in Israel, Palestine, Egypt, Lebanon, North America, or the International Space Station. Okay? Everyone's feelings are valid, and we should all allow everyone to grieve properly. Okay? Both sides have shared misinformation, and it's petty to argue whether babies' heads were cut off or they're lit on fire. Okay? It's also petty to argue that Palestinian lives are of less value simply because a terrorist organization lives within close corridors. Okay? Hatred has no place in our world. Okay? Hatred is a many-headed beast, a hydra, for lack of a better term. It's present on both sides of this geopolitical arena. Do not continue to feed this fear-mongering hydra with hatred for one another. Okay? That only divides us. Instead, it takes the weight of all our voices through actions and words to collectively stop it, hatred, out of existence. I challenge us all to listen a little more to one another, to not act from impulse or emotionally triggered state, but to empathize, sympathize, and realize we can all pull through this together. I pray for peace, and I pray for an equitable resolution. I thank this council for their time, empathy in dealing with a city, a state, and a world that every day faces hatred and prejudice towards all walks of people.
Thank you. Our next speaker is... Other signs in... It's not a rule. Sorry.
Mayor Taylor, city council members. My name is Amir Nadaf. I moved to the United States eight years ago and settled in Ann Arbor three years ago. Before that, I was born and raised in the Palestinian city of Nazareth. As a Palestinian Christian, I'm heeding the call of our local church leadership to cancel Christmas celebrations this year. We will not exchange gifts while the U.S. government is gifting Israel with unqualified military and diplomatic support. We will not enjoy a feast while half of the population of Gaza are starving. We will not rejoice in a child's birth in Bethlehem, when over 8,000 children in Palestine have been killed just a few miles away. We will not wish each other merry or happy anything on the day that would mark the 79th Day of mass indiscriminate killing of our people. This is the first time in my lifetime that Christmas will not be celebrated in my, in Jesus's hometown, or in Bethlehem, or in Jerusalem. We're the oldest Christian community in the world, and we're among those that Israel, that the Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu had recently called "children of darkness." Back home, we're not allowed to protest, we're not allowed to raise Palestinian flags, we're not allowed to express our identity without facing arrests, doxing, and threats of violence and retribution. The Israeli police chief told our community, "You want to support Gaza? I'll put you on a bus there." Silencing and repression is taking a heavy toll on our community in Ann Arbor here, too. Just talk to students and our university, healthcare workers, and our medical system or professionals in any field who are trying to speak their conscience but are being met with contempt and threats to their livelihoods. This is why it is vital for the city council to officially endorse the ceasefire, as other city councils in the state of Michigan have done. It affirms our right to dissent and represents our overwhelming democratic voice at a time when the state, when state and national leadership have failed to do so. We have run out of words to convey the urgency of the call for ceasefire. It should not be controversial to stop our indiscriminate murder. One would think, one would not think it takes political courage to speak out against what experts are calling a textbook case of genocide, but apparently it does. So I would like to thank council members Edwin, Song, and Briggs for your leadership in trying to introduce a ceasefire resolution. I ask you to keep trying. And to those of you who are still discerning, I hope you resolve to recognize the urgency of the moment and the need for immediate action. My New Year's resolution is not to let our voice go unheard ever again. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cora Geltren.
I hear this caller is on Zoom.
Thank you.
Caller has a phone number, ringing in 089. Press * to unmute your phone. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cora Geltren. I am a Jewish student and Ann Arbor resident, and I'm calling today to speak in support of the community-led resolution for a ceasefire. This resolution, while I understand that the council might not be able to adopt it in its entirety, I think it's really important that you guys talk to people who drafted it because it's really, really good. The resolution accurately called for a ceasefire as well as the release for all hostages, including Palestinian prisoners who have been unfairly detained. I don't understand the opposition to this resolution by Zionists, as it is literally calling for what they're asking for, which is the release of all hostages. The movement that is being built specifically in Ann Arbor for Palestine is intersectional, cross-generational, and values everyone. It values fighting Islamophobia, antisemitism, racism, and all forms of oppression. Antisemitism increases when Jews are equated with the state of Israel, when Jews are equated with carpet bombing, murdering children, indiscriminate home demolitions, and settlers killing innocent people in the West Bank. That is not Judaism. Zionism tries to draw that connection, and there is a large and growing contingency of American Jews who are saying, "No, that is not Judaism, this is not justice, and this is not what we will stand for." A ceasefire is the bare minimum to restore dignity to Palestinians and dignity to Jews as well. What is being done in our name right now is absolutely a genocide, war crime, and it's unacceptable. A ceasefire must happen. Thousands of children have been killed. There is no justice in indiscriminate bombings, there is no justice in murdering... There is no justice in murdering thousands of children. This does not make Jews safer, and it is a privilege to center feelings of fear and Jewish insecurity over the material danger that Palestinians are in every day. There's a coordinated gaslighting campaign being executed by Zionists and politicians across the U.S. to try and rid of us, rid us of our humanity. We will not allow it. The community resolution for a ceasefire is intersectional. It acknowledges the release of all hostages, and it works to fight antisemitism and Islamophobia. And I would really encourage the council members to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Gurk. Our next speaker is Henry Hurskowitz.
Twenty years ago, my friend Paul Eisen made the following observation: "It's as true today as it was then. The crime against the Palestinian people is being committed by a Jewish state with Jewish soldiers using weapons displaying Jewish religious symbols, and with the full support and complicity of the overwhelming mass of organized Jews worldwide. But to name Jews as responsible for this crime seems impossible to do." Israel itself claims in its 2018 Nations State Law, "The land of Israel is the historic homeland of the Jewish people in which the state of Israel was established." The racism in this statement is made clear by the changing of a few words. "America is the historic homeland of the white people in which the United States was established." Who here would be happy with that definition of our country? I wouldn't. Imagine any other ethnic group committing this ongoing genocide against the Palestinian people. Imagine if American blacks unhappy with Jim Crow in 1948 decided to ethnically cleanse Palestine to create a black nation. The world wouldn't tolerate it for a minute. The world does tolerate this ongoing genocide because it's being committed by Jews. And the world, believing the Holocaust narrative as presented by Hollywood, turns its eyes away from the Palestinian victims and their struggle for liberation because their perpetrators are Jews, and Jews are the ultimate victims. But are they? Holocaust revisionists believe a full vetting of the events of World War II will strip Jews of this ultimate victim status. The truth must be known because Palestinians today are paying the penalty for the world's ignorance. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Danya Aljammal.
Hi, my name is Danya Aljammal. I will be doing spoken word tonight to change things up for you. Why? Why do I have to stand before you to convince you for a ceasefire? Is it not a simple thing to do? Why is ceasing to kill innocent lives something we need to hold a meeting for, to protest for, to beg for? Has humanity lost its empathy? The empathy of feeling one's suffering without going through it yourself? The one we feel as we watch a father telling us about his beloved martyr daughter, Mace, look at her. She's beautiful. She's a queen. She used to make me tea before her mother would. He is a father, a hard-working father who loves his children wholeheartedly, as any father would. Or the mother who no longer has a home to tuck her child in their warm cozy bed, but instead wraps them in a white shroud, holding them for one last time. She's grieving, thinking how she's going to miss those warm, deep hugs that melt her heart away. They make sleepless nights worthy and tireless days deserving. A loving mother, just like you and me. They feel immense love. They love just as much as love exists and feel immense pain just like any human being would on this earth. So remind me once again, multiplying these stories 20,000 times fold. Why am I here to convince you of a ceasefire? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Taani Othman. Taani Othman.
If the caller with the phone number ending in 201 is on the line, please raise your
Our next speaker is Erin Marisi.
First of all, it's Marisi, Erin Marisi. Like Tazneem said earlier today, I wanted to come up here and thank you guys for supporting at least somewhat of a ceasefire resolution. But now that that resolution has been pulled, I don't feel like that would be particularly helpful. I don't think it would be particularly helpful to talk about the specific issues that I have with that ceasefire resolution. So I'll talk about some of the things that I don't support and that I'm not going to do. Okay? I don't support any ceasefire resolution that doesn't call for an end to the 75-year Israeli occupation of Palestine. I don't support any ceasefire resolution that doesn't explicitly and forcefully condemn the 75-year genocide of Palestinian people being committed by the Israeli regime. And I sure as hell don't support any ceasefire resolution that doesn't demand that our tax dollars stop being spent building the bombs and the bullets that are killing people in Palestine and all over the world. I won't sit here and squabble about what is and isn't legitimate resistance with people who are willing to turn a blind eye to 75 years of Israeli atrocities. And I won't sit here and stoop to the moral lows that are required in order to support a government that's willing to spend our tax dollars committing a genocide instead of supporting its own people. I've heard more and more people talk about how this is somehow not a local issue. But folks, I work at a food bank in Ann Arbor, and I know exactly what it looks like when our governments, including this one, support the use of our tax dollars for genocide instead of caring for their own people. It leaves us without food to eat. It leaves us without clean drinking water. It leaves us without basic hygiene products that we need to stay clean and healthy. It keeps babies from having diapers and wipes and formula. Countless strangers have approached me in public while I'm wearing my kaffiyah to tell me how many family members they've lost in this escalation alone. Friends of mine were prevented from seeing their dying mother by Israeli occupation forces before this conflict ever started. This is a local issue. This is a human issue. And any government that will be willing to allow that kind of thing to happen to its citizens just to support genocides in other countries is not worth any support. Any resolution that does not call out the Israeli occupation and Israeli atrocities is not worth supporting. Propose a resolution that calls for an end to the siege on Gaza, an end to the illegal settlements in the West Bank, an end to the Israeli occupation, and an end to the Palestinian genocide. That is a resolution that I would support. No one here or anywhere else can bully or intimidate me out of these beliefs, or any of us out of these beliefs. Nobody can shame, or guilt, or insult us out of these beliefs. I am a human in this location. I am a human in this city, and I stand steadfast resolved with this issue. Free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is... Our next speaker is Henry McKean Shapiro.
Mayor, this caller is online.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 041. Press * six to unmute your phone. Press * six...
Thank you for the time. Hi, everyone. My name is Drin McKean Shapiro. I'm a longtime Ann Arbor resident and proud anti-Zionist Jew, here alongside many other members of UMich Jewish Voices for Peace in support of introducing a community-led resolution to address the current genocide in Gaza. Like many others in JVP, my ancestors came to this country after fleeing the pogroms of the Russian Empire. I hold this memory very closely to my heart, and as a result, I find it deeply upsetting to hear Zionists invoke their suffering in order to justify the current genocide of Gaza and the 75-year-long occupation of Palestine. There are thousands of Jews that likewise stand against the genocide of Gaza and Zionism as an ideology, as you have heard and will continue to hear today, just as we view it as morally imperative to oppose all forms of apartheid and colonialism, whether in South Africa or occupied Palestine. I urge members of this council to recognize that the fate of Israel does not represent me and many other of your Jewish constituents, because I find it deeply painful that my ancestors' suffering has become a political tool to justify genocide and to prevent others from speaking out against it. If you do not take our movement's word that the state of Israel is built on violence against the indigenous Palestinian people, then take the word of Israel's founder David Ben-Gurion. Quote, "What is necessary is strong and cruel reactions. We need precision. We must strike mercilessly, women and children included. There is no need to distinguish between guilty and innocent." End quote. Ben-Gurion wrote this in his diary in 1948, the year of the ethnic cleansing of 800,000 Palestinians from their land, known as the Nakba, which inaugurated the foundation of Israel. Professor Iran Pape, a Jewish historian himself born in Palestine and outspoken as an anti-Zionist, tells us that indeed, the Nakba never ended but continues till today as the state of Israel attempts to eliminate the Palestinian nation entirely. After all, the death toll today in Gaza, over 20,000 dead civilians, has even surpassed the death toll of the Nakba. I understand that there are members of this community who would like to avoid this topic, viewing our voices as irrelevant to a conflict happening several thousand miles away and too divided to speak with moral clarity.
Thirty seconds.
This cannot be further from the truth. It is our city's duty to contribute to the nationwide movement urging for an end to U.S. support to the genocide in Gaza and U.S. support to the occupation of Palestine. Students from Palestine facing political repression for exercising their right to free speech have been clear with us that speaking up is the most important thing we can do. No contribution is too small in such urgent times, and we cannot be afraid to take a clear stance against genocide, apartheid, and ethnic cleansing. Thank you. Free Palestine.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Sepulveda.
Mayor, this caller is on Zoom.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 282. Press * six to unmute your phone. Go ahead.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Alex Sepulveda. I am a co-founder of Jewish Voices for Peace at the University of Michigan. My family has survived generations of persecution for being Jewish, and my family has also built the settlements in the West Bank, effectively forcing Palestinians out of their homes. And I want to address the delusion of the Zionists who have spoken today. For the only degradation to the Holocaust, higher than denying its history, is weaponizing it against the Palestinian people. I do not want to hear a word about antisemitism if you are going to use your Jewishness to shield Israel from accountability as it indiscriminately massacres Palestinian children. And let's also stop pretending like we have a progressive collective city council in front of us today. Please, let's cut the shit with this both-sided narrative.
Thank you.
Of course, Jews and Arabs are living in fear. They both are. But only one side is at risk of losing their jobs and their opportunities to scholarship. Let there be no debate over who is being targeted and who has to resist the forces of unending power imbalances. We're the ones who have to come here and beg for a proper ceasefire resolution to be put on the table. The power players of this nation have been explicitly clear that anti-Israel protesters are enemies of the state. Some have even insinuated that anti-Israel protesters should be deported for exercising their constitutional right to free assembly. All of the institutional wealth and power is on the side of the Zionists, and there is nothing antisemitic about what I just said. In fact, I can't think of anything more antisemitic than unwavering matrimony to Zionism. I will not listen to the delusions of Zionists who claim to be anti-racist while believing that there should be a Jewish-majority state in the Middle East. Jewish majority, Jewish majority. It sounds like Jewish supremacy. As a matter of fact, it looks like white supremacy. The same white supremacy that forced my great uncle into the Bergen-Belton concentration camp during the Holocaust is the same white supremacy, the same white supremacy that is responsible for constructing the apartheid walls surrounding Gaza right now. We need to be unabashed and unrelenting in leading the charge for Palestinian liberation if we are to be committed to justice. Not only should we call for an end to Zionism, but we need to call for an immediate ceasefire. Lastly, I know that a person in attendance today was compiling a list of pro-Palestinian voices, and that list was entitled "The Word." Lists like these are made to harass the greatest forces behind our movement, and I urge city council to take effective measures to ensure protection for Palestinian activists. And this community, thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Ezekiel.
My name is David Ezekiel Herrera. I am a resident of Ward 5, and I am here to voice my support for the community-led resolution for a ceasefire. I also want to add my voice to the growing numbers of anti-Zionist Jewish members of the community who understand that the state of Israel is not in keeping with our values and that we must speak up and oppose material support, explicit moral support, and tacit support by way of silence of the horrific genocide that is currently devastating Gaza. The months since October 7th have been trying in our communities, to say the least. I was denied time and space to process the fear and sorrow I felt for people in the Kibbutzim, including members of my extended family, as they were subsumed by the crushing awareness that Israel was on the precipice of enacting unspeakable violence. And as I'm sure many people here can relate, the calamity that ensued has greatly surpassed my worst nightmares. The least we can do as a community that values human life and dignity is to call for a ceasefire. And our local communities have to step up as our national-level domestic and international representatives in the U.S. government have so utterly failed to do so in this regard. In the last meeting, I heard my Jewish identity misused to equivocate on and oppose our ceasefire resolution, and I take deep exception to that. My traditions taught me to value peace, equality, and justice. Our Passover seder included a song paraphrasing the words of the prophet Isaiah. "And everyone neath their vine and fig tree shall live in peace and unafraid, and into plowshares beat their swords, nations shall learn war no more." Please do not let selective consideration for your Jewish constituents be used as an excuse not to stand up for peace and human dignity. We are a much more diverse community than the nationalist ideology of Zionism, which is innate neither to our cultural or religious tradition would have you believe. I hope we can do away with this conflation and stand up for what is right. Ceasefire now and free Palestine.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Aronson.
Did I hear my name, Chris?
Yes, you're good.
Yeah, hi. My name is Stephen Aronson. I was so... I was so hoping, so hoping that in the three limited minutes that I have, I would be able to help bridge some of the previous speakers and some of the, while you guys were out on your smoking break, by the way, I hope you had a good break. You deserve it. You work hard. That was a joke, sorry. There actually was good interaction. I was hoping to be able to maybe tap into some of, maybe some glimmers of some hope and some light. And the last five speakers, and this is not meant ad hominem, God forbid, it's about the words, the ideas. I want to make sure that it is very clear to everybody in this room and everybody who's following that the way the term ceasefire is being used today, the way that occupation and we're talking, and thank you, folks, for doing my work, which I hope not to have to do. Seventy-five years of occupation means the existence of the single state, single Jewish state. It means taking away my right, the right of Jews, to self-determination, which does not mean ipso facto that the other doesn't have right as well. The history of this conflict has been one of asymmetry. The Peel Commission, 1937, 1947 partition report, 1993, 95, 98, even as late as 2008, huge, huge peace agreements broken primarily by the United States and the West, where Israel has given back everything, plus, in exchange for true peace and demilitarization. Unfortunately, the leaders, not the Palestinian people, God forbid, but the leaders, have never missed an opportunity and missed an opportunity for a compromise that would lead us to a true, and thank you Debbie Dingell for reminding us, a true two-state solution. What our folks this evening unfortunately are teaching us is that from the river to the sea is absolutely antithetical to compromise and a two-state solution, because from the river to the sea means the eradication of the state of Israel. I, I.
The internet example. The net is not the sun.
Ma'am.
The internet is not the sun. From the river to the sea, only flag will be his. Address that.
Let me tell you what I really wanted to say. I wanted to say here, folks, could we please allow our wonderful city council and our wonderful staff in the back who are unsung heroes getting a lot of flack and all the unsung dirty work in setting up all these meetings and tolerating all of us with all the craziness that we bring with us? What would happen if we were to say, this is what I really wanted to say, and I still want to say it. What would you say if we could take a break? What would happen if we took our masks off, took our slogans away, took our statements and our scripts and our posturing out of the limelight, off the stage, and maybe even met a human being, coughing to each other?
Thank you.
Is there a possibility of that happening? Please, God, whatever God we pray or believe.
Thank you.
His time is up.
Thank you.
If there's a possibility of that.
Thank you.
This is what I really wanted to say. There were good discussions during that extended break. Thank you for all that you do and for.
Our next speaker is Lauren Sharp.
Hello, my name is Lauren Sharp. I'm a resident of Ann Arbor, and I'm a member of the Jewish community in Ann Arbor. I'm here today speaking on behalf of Jewish Voice for Peace at the University of Michigan. And I'm addressing the city council today to ask you to consider the community-led resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. I understand that the city council is hesitant about issuing a statement about Gaza because many council members believe it does not fall under municipal jurisdiction, and I would like to address that today. There's so much to be said about the suffering of Palestinian people in Gaza and across the world right now, and in my opinion, the humanitarian crisis should be reason enough to pass a ceasefire urgently. But as was stated earlier today, it is a privilege to concern ourselves with the safety of our community here while so many thousands are dead abroad. But today, I would like to use my time to address the ways in which the community-led ceasefire resolution would support the local Jewish community in Ann Arbor. Ann Arbor has a duty to its Jewish citizens to acknowledge that the state of Israel does not represent all Jewish people. President Biden this week said that the only safe place in the world for Jewish people is Israel. If you accept the idea that defending the state of Israel at the cost of thousands of lives is the only way to make Jewish people safe, you are offloading the responsibility of dealing with antisemitism here in Ann Arbor. I deserve to feel safe here. That is your responsibility as a council. The idea that Palestinian people need to die for me as a Jewish person to feel safe in Ann Arbor, Michigan, is absurd. It would be laughable if it were not so vile. The community-led ceasefire resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza condemns hate of all forms, including antisemitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Arab and Palestinian racism. It condemns the abuse of the word antisemitism to describe valid criticism of the Israeli government. It protects free speech, and it protects my right as a Jewish religious woman who believes that the existence of the state of Israel at the expense of even one precious life is an affront to the teachings of Judaism and that nationalism is idolatry. This community-led resolution is not radical or controversial. This resolution simply moves the stated opinion of the people of Ann Arbor to actively and materially supporting Israel and the genocide, to not supporting either Israel or Palestine politically, but instead focusing on the security of Ann Arbor citizens and their families abroad. Calling for a ceasefire is not controversial. Just this week, three Israeli hostages taken by Hamas were killed because of the indiscriminate bombing and shooting of the IDF. We talk about wanting to bring the hostages home. That is acknowledged by the ceasefire resolution. I do not want my people to die. I do not want my Palestinian brothers and sisters to die, and I would hope that my city council could acknowledge that. I would hope that my city council could acknowledge my right to speak out against my people being killed in my name. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Trager.
Edward Trager. Thank you all, city council and everyone. There are so many good speakers that I feel like I don't really, perhaps don't even need to speak. I'll be very brief, though. Mine's less than, it's like a minute long. Thank you, city council, for listening to the voices of Palestinians and all allies, even through all of the dissonance that we've heard. I want to especially thank council members Ayesha Reza Edwin, Erica Briggs, and Lynn Song for taking on the seemingly Herculean task of forging a ceasefire resolution. I actually think that we can get it done. I really honestly believe we can get a ceasefire done. I don't think it's going to be as hard as we imagine, especially after hearing all the voices and the heartfelt voices that we've heard this night. So, in the midst of sometimes raucous dissent, thank you for doing the right thing, seriously. And I urge all of you on city council to do the brave thing and introduce and pass, of course, a ceasefire resolution crafted with all the community voices that we've heard. And I think that's really doable. A resolution that affirms the sanctity of all lives in Gaza, demands the unfettered delivery of humanitarian aid, and the release of all Palestinian detainees, and of course, all Israeli hostages as well, right? I honestly, I pray every day in this season of strife, where, I don't know, none of us are going to be celebrating Christmas, that all of us will courageously fulfill our respective duties with empathy towards one another in our community, in community, and in commune with the suffering people of Gaza, the suffering people in the occupied territories, the suffering people in all of Israel as well, and all over the world. In peace, salam, wa shalom. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Omar Abid.
Can you start the thing again? I didn't know what's, thank you. In the name of God, the merciful, the compassionate, good evening to the mayor and to each of the council members. At the break last, in the last meetings, someone accidentally thought that council member Briggs had mentioned something which was false, and I complained about that, and so I was mistaken, so I apologize to council member Briggs. And I want to thank council member Ayesha Reza Edwin and Erica Briggs and Lynn Song for the, working for the resolution and for whoever else is supporting that. I'm a physician. I'm an epidemiologist. I was the epidemic intelligence service officer in the Centers for Disease Control, where I was also lieutenant commander in the U.S. Public Health Service. Human Rights Watch today has said, has written a thing saying that the Israeli government is using starvation of civilians as a method of warfare in the Gaza Strip, which is a war crime. Israeli officials have made public statements expressing their aim to deprive civilians in Gaza of food, water, and fuel. Statements reflected in Israeli forces' military operations. The Israeli government should not attack objects necessary for survival of the civilian population, lift its blockade of the Gaza Strip, which of course means food and medicine and everything civilians need, and restore electricity and water, which Israel has cut off. So, I just wanted to say that it's extremely important that when you all write your resolution that the U.S. has been telling Israel to send the humanitarian aid, but it hasn't been. So you have to be very specific. You have to say that the humanitarian aid must be at the level that the U.N. says is necessary. And all the border crossings have to be open, especially Kerem Shalom, which the U.N. says is the only border crossing where the heavy-duty aid trucks are able to go. And the aid has to go to every single civilian in Gaza. Israel is not allowing aid to go to North Gaza, where there's 245,000 people in Gaza. I know of people who have, who said that their parents have starved to death. So, we have to do this right away, and please check, the United Nations has stated that half the people in Gaza are starving. Can you imagine if every single man, woman, and child right now in Detroit is starving because of our tax dollars? They're starving, and, you know, the amount of people murdered by the bombs, the civilians, the civilians are not the collateral damage. Hamas is the collateral damage. There's more journalists killed than Hamas. There's more U.N. officials killed than Hamas. Just imagine every single person in Ypsilanti is murdered. More than that has happened in Gaza, and 50,000, that's way more than Ypsilanti's population, have been wounded, and many of them have critical life injuries. There's no medicine. There's 50,000 women who are pregnant and, and who are.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gregley McClure. I have a hard time seeing behind the, behind the speaker. Folks with signs behind the speaker could keep them below shoulder level and also out of the aisles. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. I didn't realize it would be such a late evening, but with so many of us talking about a very important topic, I guess it only suffices that we would be talking until the dead of night and the early morning. Council members Briggs, Reza Edwin, and Song, I would like to start, of course, by thanking you for cosponsoring a ceasefire resolution. I am sorry to see it pulled, but conversely, I'm glad to see it pulled because language does still need to be addressed. My name is Greg McClure. I'm from the Third Ward, so, Reza Edwin, I especially appreciate you directly supporting my desires, directly using your voice to amplify mine. Council member Radina, I appreciate your personal support for a ceasefire resolution, but I would also appreciate your material support for a ceasefire resolution, the one that has been adopted by the community. And I would also like to just address your comments earlier. I believe that the continued framing of this genocide as the Israel-Hamas war is disingenuous and harmful. This also erases the violent raids that the Israeli occupation forces have continued to conduct in the West Bank and the many bulldozers that they have used to continue to siege hospitals. I believe that it is important to get language correct. I am an English and math teacher. The last time that I spoke was December 4th. That was two weeks ago. On December 5th, no, December 6th, Dr. Rafat Al-Arir, a poet, scholar, and teacher of Shakespearean literature, was killed in an Israeli airstrike in his home along with his family. I will attempt to read in my minute that I have left his poem, "If I Must Die," certainly now that he has. "If I must die, you must live to tell my story, to sell my things, to buy a piece of cloth and some strings. Make it long, make it white with a long tail, so that a child, somewhere in Gaza, while looking heaven in the eye, awaiting his dad who left in a blaze, and bid no one farewell, not even to his flesh, not even to himself, sees the kite, my kite you made, flying up above, and thinks for a moment an angel is there, bringing back love. If I must die, let it bring hope. Let it be a tale."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mojean Salabia Safani.
Hello, Ann Arbor, and thank you for coming. So many well-spoken people have basically described the genocide that Israel is conducting against Palestinian people tonight. There is no need for me to go through all of that. The situation is horrific. People are starving to death. Hospitals, schools, they've been demolished, destroyed. For those of you who have great hopes for this city council, I want to say a few words so you can figure out how hard you have to fight them back, because you are unfamiliar with them, and I have known this city council for over 20 years. Mayor Taylor, who sits here, he tells you that he cares about Palestinian lives. He does not. In fact, he goes to Zionist events, and he prays for the state of Israel, yes, that genocidal racist state of Israel. He prays for them. On this city council, we have other people who have shown their, their support for Zionism and never one word to protect Palestinian lives. I am only saying these things so the young people who are here can figure out that they need to push a lot harder to make this bunch do one thing for Palestinians. For 20 years, they've had the opportunity to pass the simplest resolution. We are against military aid to Israel. They have not. They should have, and if they had done that, there would be some measure of protection for Palestinian people. They never did that. On top of that, this last round of genocide in Palestine, for 72 days, for a whole solid month, we were coming here, and this, this bunch said not one thing. Never said ceasefire, never said stop the carnage, never. They had every opportunity. They only did it because there was immense pressure applied by you guys, and they finally did it, some half-ass stuff, which has to be changed. But it tells you that you have the power to force them, and they will do it only if you apply severe pressure, because their allegiance is to Zionists in this town, their allegiance is to money in this town, and they do not care. If they tell you they care about environment, they don't. If they tell you they care about housing, they don't. They build all kinds of fancy housing for the rich, nothing for the poor. Everybody goes live somewhere else. So I want you to know the essence of these people, because unless you know who they are, you cannot fight them back. And you need to fight them, because we need to liberate Palestine. We need to make sure our children are not dying anymore. These people have no heart. They do not care if every child in Palestine dies. It is our job to push them and force them to embrace their humanity. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nam Shaw.
Hi, respected council. I don't have anything prepared, and some of you look a little bit bored and kind of downtrodden. So I'm going to bring it back to something you guys are very familiar with, and that's leaf blowers. So just to point out, I mean, we've been to quite a few council meetings you guys are probably familiar with. You guys are probably familiar with a lot of the faces that are here. And we've been hearing about leaf blowers almost every single time, about the different decibels of gas versus electric. And with all due respect, you guys haven't been able to solve a simple leaf blower dispute. We don't need you to solve peace in the Middle East. We don't need you to say in a resolution whether there should be a one-state, two-state, three-state, four-state solution. We don't need those bits. We need a ceasefire. We need humanitarian aid. And if you want specifics, the community did give you a ceasefire resolution with specifics, with accredited human rights organizations, with accredited United Nations reports, for all the statistics that you would ever need. We did call for the release of all hostages, not just the Israeli ones, but also the Palestinian ones. So I do understand. I don't envy your position. It is difficult. But that's what we elected you to do. What leadership, how that shows is in times of turmoil. When your community turns to you, how do you react? When your community comes to you and has been consistently coming and has been consistently showing up, how do you react? I heard someone say earlier, and I don't remember which council member it was, that you've been working with the community. The community did put forth a resolution, but the community didn't really hear back. Whether you guys liked those points, whether you didn't, what community exactly was it that you were working with? Because the resolution that we put forth, again, was vetted by our LGBTQ allies, by our allies in the Jewish Voice for Peace, by our allies in the Palestinian organizations that are local to us. So again, what community was it that you worked with? Because you know us. You know the voices that are here. You know the voices that keep speaking up, and you know the voices that have been reaching out to you via email. And we do appreciate you for trying to stand on the right side of history. But again, this is not a really difficult issue. If you need stats, they're in the resolution, and we're more than happy to go over them with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Basit Safar.
Hi. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I first want to thank Councilmembers Ayesha, Erica, and Councilmember Lynn for sponsoring the ceasefire resolution. Although it was flawed, and unfortunately, it was withdrawn, it was definitely a positive step forward, and I do think with some modifications, it could be a really meaningful resolution. I urge the council to promptly introduce a new, more balanced resolution. The fact is that we really can't be silent bystanders to the ongoing humanitarian crisis that's going on in Gaza. The genocide, and you've already heard from so many community members today, the genocide is happening on the other side of the world, facilitated by our taxpayer money, but it is directly affecting people who are living here. Ensuring the safety of all our neighbors, regardless of their backgrounds, should be the council's top priority. Anti-Semitism and Islamophobia are rising locally and nationally. Yet, at a recent House hearing, they only chose to focus on anti-Semitism. I'm a professor at the University of Michigan. The messaging that has been coming from my employer is totally tone deaf, and it's in violation to its own commitment to D.I.E., okay? Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. My Congresswoman is quick to express her outrage at the assault of Israeli women, but is mostly passive when Palestinian women and children are assaulted. The White House today raised concerns about two Christians who died in Gaza, but yet it has not raised concerns about the tens and thousands of Arabs and Muslims who have died for the past two months. I think you get the point here. I can go on and on. The current rhetoric and the behavior is blatantly discriminatory and dehumanizing, and it needs to stop. I live in Ward 2. I recently placed a yard sign behind my house, which simply said, "Save the Children on a Palestinian Flag." Two weeks ago, that yard sign had disappeared. This is Ann Arbor, okay? As a parent of three children, all below the age of 15, two of them were here earlier today, and now they've gone home, of course, think about, like, they're seeing everything that's happening around them. How should they, what should they take from the silence of this council? What should they take about the tone deafness of our elected politicians at the state at the national level? The fact is that, you know, our political system is totally dysfunctional, and that's why I've turned to the council. I'm imploring you to call out the discriminatory rhetoric, the double speak in the media and the political discourse, and to support the ceasefire resolution. Mayor Taylor, I'm going to disagree with something that you said earlier. You said that things are complicated. I just don't understand since when a genocide and indiscriminate bombing, indiscriminate bombing of thousands of people has become something complicated. It should be something that should be very easy to call out. Passing such a resolution would reaffirm your commitment to the well-being of all residents in our community, to truth and to justice. Doing so does not make you pro-Palestinian or anti-Semitic. It simply makes you pro-human.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Raven Merron.
My name is Raven. I'm a journalist for Ground Cover News and a representative of the Michigan General Defense Committee. I'm here once again calling for your support of a resolution for a ceasefire in Palestine that explicitly condemns the actions of Israel. Since October 7th, nearly two, since October 7th, nearly 20,000 civilians have been murdered by IDF forces, with 8,000 of those martyrs being children. Israel continues to instruct Gazans to move further south. Gaza is the size of Detroit with a population of over 2 million. There is no space left for these people to retreat to. Even though supposed safe zones are continually attacked and bombed, there are no safe zones in Gaza. These are not terrorists, not soldiers, but innocent civilians who are being attacked. Israeli forces have shown no mercy in their bombing campaign, with the use of white phosphorus, which is considered a war crime under the Geneva Convention, which Israel is a signee of. According to a report by the Associated Press, a child is murdered in Gaza every 10 minutes. That means by the end of this city council meeting, over 30 children will have been murdered. To demonstrate the results of this violence, I will now play a video from a hospital inside Gaza. Do you hear their anguish? When you don't call for a ceasefire, this is what you're supporting, the genocide of children. So when you pass, so when will you pass the resolution? When will you divest? Why is it so hard for you to condemn genocide when it shows itself as clear as day? It is easy for you to condemn the invasion and occupation of Ukraine, but why not Gaza? Why can't you condemn Russia but not Israel? I would also like to remind those who are quick to call this movement anti-Semitic that this is a fight, that this is not a fight against Judaism. This is a fight against Zionism and imperialism. I condemn the acts of anti-Semitic violence that have been perpetrated against the Jewish community. There is no, there is no excuse for hate crimes. When future generations look back on this day, will they be proud of our action, or they'll be disgusted by our negligence? Already, the cities of Ypsilanti, Detroit, Hamtramck, Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, Canton Township, and many others across the state of Michigan have passed resolutions calling for a ceasefire in Palestine. I hope Ann Arbor will join these communities in being on the right side of history. May Allah protect the people of Gaza, and may this genocide be resolved peacefully. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free!
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shima Saragiyani. Our next speaker, no? Our next speaker is Deki Alexander.
As an American Jew, I have listened to the hundreds of people in our A2 community, many who simultaneously appear to live in multiple cities, Ypsilanti, Canton, and Ann Arbor, at the same time, attend and speak city council meetings. Most are not speaking on leaf blowers, except perhaps one, or easements and equity, but on something beyond this council's purview, the Israel-Gaza War, myself included. Many of us, but not all, on the Jewish side argue that city councils are not the place to make resolutions on geopolitical issues thousands of miles away. That is still my, our stance. But councils are being exploited and used to peacock and pontificate run-of-the-mill Jewish hate. What started as a request for a ceasefire, rightly so, has become an opportunity to delegitimize me, this Jewish community, our ancestors, and our history, and that, to me, is anti-Semitism. Many voices here are using this moment to amplify the stance that, and I quote, "This war did not begin October 7th, but began 75 years ago," end quote, when the land was partitioned by the United Nations. Perhaps they are right. This moment in time did not begin on October 7th. Perhaps it began when in 1940s and 50s, 700,000 Mizrazi Jews were forced to leave their homes and lands in Arab countries, Egypt, Yemen, and Iran and Iraq. Or it began when 6 million Jews in the 1930s and 40s, basically the entire population of the state of Wisconsin, were burned and banished from the earth. Or it began in 1919 when more than 1,100 pogroms killed over 100,000 Jews in present-day Ukraine. Or it began in the 1800s when thousands of Jews, village Jews in Russia, were burned to the ground. Or it began even earlier in the Crusades, or with the Egyptians forcing us to wander 40 years in desert without any anti-humidity spray or pomade. If you meet a Jew anyplace in the world, we bleed memory. I'm a professor and teacher, and what I know to be true is that if you want everyone in the classroom to feel heard, to learn, you don't acquiesce to those that yell the loudest, take up the most space, disrupt, interrupt, because that will simply silence those who don't perform that way. And that is what has been happening here. And not since October 7th, but for 15 to 20 years. That silencing is done. The war is here. That is most evident. And thus, as a city council, I think your role should be, really, to cultivate a space for us citizens to listen and learn and to find some resolve between and among each other, Jews and Muslims, Arabs, Palestinians, Israeli people here. And thus, our ask this night and every night going forward is quite simply to ensure that those who live and work here feel safe, secure, and that we belong. And that is a resolution we can get fully behind.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristin Hayden.
Your people cannot give other people's land away. No. It's not your land.
Our next speaker is Kristin Hayden.
Mayor, this caller is on Zoom. Go ahead. Hi, I'm a resident of Ward 2, and I appreciate being able to speak tonight in favor of the council using the community ceasefire resolution as put forth on December 4th. I'm very glad that Councilmembers Ghazi Edwin, Briggs, and Song are working to put forth a resolution, and I really want to ensure that the community that is in this room is part of building the wording, as these folks will be impacted directly. I also want to add that since the original community ceasefire was put forth, an additional 4,000 people have been killed in Palestine, including five journalists, among other numbers I could add, as well as continued destruction of healthcare and civilian infrastructure. This information can be updated for you while you work on your resolution. I'm speaking in solidarity with community members of all stripes here today who see the need for a local ceasefire resolution to both support safety for residents and to express to our lawmakers that they need to push harder for a ceasefire at the international level. For instance, although Representative Single has called for a ceasefire, she has not signed on to the House Resolution 786. Furthermore, hate incidents, as described in recent public comments from a large number of residents, to me indicate the need for this resolution as soon as possible to provide support for those most affected, including schoolchildren and students at the university who face anti-Arab, Islamophobic, anti-Semitic, and racist attacks. This matters to me because my community is hurting, and I invite those of you who have not chosen to sponsor or support a ceasefire to reconsider how you could better stand up for those you represent. And I want to again thank Councilmember Song for Ward 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Josh Winston.
I'd like to express my gratitude to the city council. Even though I would prefer no resolution on the Israel-Hamas war, I'm grateful to have council, to have council members who made an incredible effort to find a middle ground. Since this war began, the rhetoric being employed has led us to an us-versus-them sentiment, a black-and-white binary that flattens us all into labels. They say you're either for or against ceasefire. You are either pro-Israel or pro-Palestinian. October 7th was a genocide. No, the subsequent war is a genocide. And there's no surprise here. That's the way of the world these days. When movements are designed for hashtags, views, and likes, the simpler the message, the better. When we can reduce a complex problem into soundbites, we feel good about ourselves but haven't changed a damn thing about the world. One day, this conflict will be over. One day, God willing, there will be a Palestinian state standing side by side next to a state of Israel. Both peoples deserve self-determination. I hope and pray and even work toward that possibility in my personal and professional life. The Palestinians have nowhere else to go, and neither do the Israelis. We, however, don't live in Israel or Palestine. We live here in Ann Arbor, and when this conflict is over, we will still need to live together. And so I just remind all of us and call on all of us, regardless of our religious background or ethnic identity, to be mindful of our words, to not diminish the pain of others, to see the human beings standing before you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rima Hassaney.
Yes, it's past midnight. I am Palestinian, and I've lived in Ann Arbor for 22 years, and I'm a Ward 5 resident. I do, I think I'll really echo what many before me have said, but thank you for your patience with me. I do want to thank explicitly councilmembers Ghazi Edwin, Lynn Song, and Briggs for doing the right thing and putting forth or drafting the ceasefire resolution for Gaza. It was long overdue, but very welcome. I am disappointed it has been pulled, and I do hope and urge you to reintroduce and pass it, for humanitarian reasons, if for no other. A ceasefire and an immediate one, I hope, is evident. The other thing I want to say might be perceived as silly, but it's really a simple fact. Palestinians are not numbers. I really want to resist speaking about us and statistics. We are people, storied people, just like anyone else, mothers, daughters, fathers, sons, neighbors, et cetera. I could go on, but I won't. And I actually want to thank Greg Lee McClure, the person before me, who chose to honor the life of Rafat al-Arair, that remarkable poet who was cut down on December 8th. I've thought about him a lot. He was a father of six. He was quite a beloved teacher, and he loved to teach Shakespeare. And he was assassinated by Target by an Israeli bomb that was funded with our taxpayer dollars. And he was also killed "mission," in quotation marks, "successful," with his sister, brother, and four nieces, who were sheltering with him. So I really do want to turn to pay homage to him. I'm not posturing. I'm not being dogmatic. But I really want to voice him, again, a beautiful, beautiful human being who died too young. "If I must die, you must live to tell my story, to sell my things, to buy a piece of cloth and some strings. Make it white with a long tail, so that a child, somewhere in Gaza, while looking heaven in the eye, awaiting his dad, who left in a blaze, and bid no one farewell, not even to his flesh, not even to himself, sees the kite, sees the kite, my kite you made, flying up above, and thinks for a moment an angel is there, bringing back love. If I must die, let it bring hope, let it be a tale." And thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sophie Elzame. Our next speaker is Sophie Alzine.
Mayor, this caller is on Zoom. Caller with the phone number ending in 644. Go ahead.
Good evening. Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
As a UMass Ann Arbor community member, I love the people of Ann Arbor. But what I don't understand is that the city council of Ann Arbor has made a litany of excuses for why they cannot propose or pass a ceasefire resolution for Gaza. If one silent in Ann Arbor were murdered, everyone would cry. If 50 children were murdered in Ann Arbor in a school shooting, government officials here would express outrage. If 100 children were killed in Ann Arbor, it would be unimaginable. Yes, Ann Arbor City Council said nothing when 50 children were murdered in Gaza, when 100 children were murdered, when 500 children were murdered, when 1,000 children were murdered: 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000, 6,000, 7,000, 8,000. There are nearly 10,000 children murdered in Gaza, murdered by American bombs with American funding and American government support. 20,000 people, 10,000 children, paid for by Ann Arbor taxes. How did you watch 10,000 children murdered and not say, "Stop this bombing, ceasefire"? There is literally no reason, no possible explanation but bloodthirst to not say, "Stop this bombing, ceasefire." It is not anti-Semitic or partisan to call for the bombing to stop. 10,000 children are children, children calling out, "I couldn't save my brother," as the rubble fell over him. Children burned to death by bombs, children foaming at the mouth from the white phosphorus, children with skulls split in half, children with missing hands crying that they want their hands back, children calling out, "Tell me, uncle, is this real? Is this a nightmare?" I want to hope that you have a conscience. I want to hope that you have a heart. I want to hope that you will call for a ceasefire before you look yourselves in the mirror and realize that you chose the sides of complicitly supporting the murder of thousands upon thousands of children.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Blaine Coleman.
I speak for myself and no one else. I don't speak for the Palestinian people. I can't. I never have. But the Palestinian people have spoken for themselves. The Palestinian people have given the Ann Arbor City Council a resolution for ceasefire against military aid to Israel. The Palestinian people, right here in this room, have given the Ann Arbor City Council a resolution. Why in the hell is it so hard for you to pass a simple resolution? All it says is "stop bombing Palestinians to death en masse." That's all it says. And PS, "Stop handing Israel more money to bomb more Palestinians to death." That's all it says. This city council is weighed down with PhD degrees and law degrees, and they weep and say, "I don't know what to do, you assholes. Of course you know what to do. Of course you know what to do. You passed the fucking resolution." Or turn in your humanity card. Or turn in your humanity card, because you're not even human. If you cannot see that you are killing thousands and thousands of Palestinians with your tax money, with your political support, you are not human. Why is it so fucking hard for you to understand that? What in the hell is wrong with you? What in the hell is wrong with you?
Our next speaker is Tracy Tager. Tracy Tager. Bocheck, thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Emirates.
I'm Sarah. I live on unceded Potawatomi land, colonial known as Ypsilanti. I work here on unceded Potawatomi, Ottawa, Ojibwe, and Wyandot land that we call Ann Arbor. I am terrified of public speaking, and I am more terrified of being silent about genocide. I also can't help but recognize what a privilege it is to be this is what's most terrifying for me today. I'm here because of the genocide and also to be part of the incredible community of people who have been speaking out to call for a ceasefire and to invite you all as city councils to do the same. I attended the University of Michigan School of Social Work and now work as a therapist, primarily focusing on trauma and attachment. A massive part of trauma work is exploring experiences that fundamentally overwhelm a person's nervous system and ability to cope. A devastatingly common experience for trauma survivors and all people who have been impacted by events and interactions in their lives has been invalidated and told their experience doesn't matter. They are silenced and dismissed. Oftentimes, the silence itself is a big part of what our sessions explore and what have shaped any number of internalized messages that disconnect the person from existing fully and see themselves as worthy of esteem, care, and connection. We are drowning in trauma, and the silence is devastating. We are watching war crimes, including collective punishment, white phosphorus bombing, indiscriminate attacks, destruction of religious sites, use of human shields, violation of medical neutrality, executing surrendered people, abuse, and humiliation. We know 2.2 million people were cut off from water and food in a single day because Israel had the power to do that. Even if we do not say anything, we are financing these and this genocide. Ann Arbor has contributed over $1.8 million, and Ypsilanti has contributed over $305,000. Over $2.1 million, excluding U of M's investments, have been stolen from the community resources that need it most here in Washtenaw County. October 7th was an atrocity, and it was devastating to see so many people killed. There are no words that can capture the extent of the multiple daily atrocities Palestinians have faced since October 7th nor the 75 years before that. I'm asking anyone upset by October 7th to continue to be upset about the exact same thing for the Palestinians on October 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, and every day until a ceasefire is called and we, as the US, stop sending weapons. I'm asking you to be upset that Israeli citizens were bombed indiscriminately and shot at by Israeli occupation forces on the 7th. Israeli hostages continue to be killed by IOF, whether or not they are shot by snipers or crushed to death in revel from indiscriminate bombing. I'm asking you to understand that Palestinians are also very real human beings deserving of the care, safety, connection, and belonging we all strive for. I'm asking you, as city council members with the power and privilege to do so, to stop letting the funding we send to Israel be the only voice we are using. Please call for a ceasefire is the very least we can do, and honestly, something that should happen once a go.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fae Sayed.
First time, I would thank you. Thank the council members Ghazi Edwin and Briggs for the ceasefire resolution and Councilmember Song for co-sponsoring it. I did want to remind, just in the last few days of this genocide, just in the last few days, Israeli bulldozers buried alive wounded patient civilians on the grounds of Kamal Adwan Hospital. Just imagine, just in your mind, just imagine, buried alive in by bulldozers. We remember Rachel Corey, obviously, who was similarly bulldozed. Israel killed patients, refugees in Shifa and Nasr hospitals. Israel killed children, civilians execution style, in Shadia Abu Ghazala School west of the Jabalya Refugee Camp. Israeli army killed three Israeli hostages who were waving a white flag. Israeli army killed a mother and daughter in the Holy Family Church in Gaza. Israeli army massacred civilians in refugee camps. Israel is hindering humanitarian aid by not letting trucks enter through the rougher border. People are dying from hunger. Imagine people dying from hunger while supplies are waiting at the border to enter. This is just the last few days. So just in the last few days, Israel has targeted children, civilians, refugee camps, school, church, killing hostages wanting safety, killing people with forced hunger. In two months, Israel killed more than 19,000 civilians, including more than 8,000 children. 4,000 people are arbitrarily detained in Israeli jails. The accounts of mistreatment of Palestinian detainees are appalling. An accession and forced displacement continue. This is the reality of genocide, and every day, every day there is no ceasefire, more lives are lost. We cannot tolerate the hungry and dead children. We cannot tolerate them. As a plurality of Democrats in this country call for a ceasefire, our state and federal leaders refuse to hear us. Call them on our behalf, please. Join a chorus of local leaders, local voices in Michigan, so the state and federal leaders that refuse to hear us will hear us, will pay attention. Call for a ceasefire, unimpeded humanitarian aid in Gaza, release of all hostages in Israel and Gaza, protection, freedom of speech here at home, combating Islamophobia and anti-Semitism. We're calling you to stand up for justice. This is a local issue because it affects our community. Call so that our state and federal leaders hear us loud and clear. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Mueller, who I believe is on the Zoom.
Caller with the phone number ending in 254. Go ahead.
I'm speaking here in support of the community-wide resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire in Palestine. Many Palestinian members of our community have shared their experience of the horrifying context behind this resolution. Since October 7th, the so-called State of Israel has murdered over 20,000 Palestinians and ethnically cleansed over millions of Gazans from their homes. This is an act of genocide unprecedented in modern times, but it's only the latest injustice against Palestinians who have experienced an ongoing Nakba since the original theft of their land in 1948. In response to these atrocities, the Palestinians have an absolute right to resist the just Zionist regime. They have continued to resist decade after decade. None of us has a moral right to condemn Palestinian resistance. While many of us in the US like to think that we're willing to stand for justice, there's been no justice in the US's role in the genocide of Palestinians. Joe Biden and most of our elected politicians actively support this genocide, funding the Zionist occupation forces with our tax dollars. That's money that should be going to good schools, housing, healthcare, reparations, not bombing children. Critics of Israel, including Rashida Tlaib, continue to be smeared, socked, labeled anti-Semitic. And by the way, as a Jewish anti-Zionist, I strongly believe that anti-Zionism is not anti-Semitism. Activists are being targeted, even at UM. On November 17th, over 50 cop cars from at least 10 jurisdictions, including UMDD and AAPD, were brought in to enact racist police violence against peaceful student protesters calling on UM to divest from Israel's genocide. I personally was in a group of over 40 students who were arrested. Now, in spite of this pressure, millions of people are speaking out and supporting Palestine. Members of our community have called for you, our elected city councils, to pass a resolution demanding the bare minimum, a permanent ceasefire. More and more cities like Ypsilanti are finally also taking this step. Now, it seems you've finally made the choice to continue the path of silence and refusing to act for justice, as our tax dollars murder Palestinians every single day. Your tears and your words, that you're listening, that you emphasize, and so on, these are all meaningless until you pass the community resolution. We know that justice will prevail with or without you, and we will see Palestinians return to a liberated Palestine from the river to the sea.
Thank you. Are there communications from camp? We have a motion to adjourn. Please, moved by Councilmember Song, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion, all in favor, posed, we're adjourned.